Welcome to the City Council's December fourteenth regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs, Mayor of Menlo Park for 2021. I would like to introduce the rest of the City Council members present in council chambers and the staff present in council chambers. They are Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller, City Council Member Jen Willison, City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, City Clerk Judy Heron, Deputy City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty and Assistant City Manager Nick Pégares, City Council Members and Staff Participating Remotely, City Council Members Celia Taylor. Next we'll turn to agenda items under C, Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advanced notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order or any requests for the City Council members from City Council members under City Council member reports. So first item, we will be reordering the regular business items, taking item F six first, and that's a adopted resolution directing the City Manager and City Attorney to develop interim guidance rules and regulations for implementation of Senate Bill nine, SB nine, before January first, 2022. Are there any other changes that the council would like to make? Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes, I would like to pull E six purchasing policy and E nine budget amendments.
Councilmember Taylor.
E one, I would like to pull E one.
Okay, all right, so with that, E one, E six, E nine will be pulled from the consent calendar for further discussion. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general direction. Again, the section of public comment is for items not listed on the business agenda this evening. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for, from, for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under agenda sections E consent calendar, F regular business, or G informational items. With those instructions, City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment, general public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D, public comment, for items not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine now. And at this time, I would like to allow Senator Becker to speak.
Excellent, thank you. I hope you all can hear me well. I was just calling as a, as your state senator and as a resident, a longtime 25-year resident in Menlo Park, just to call and congratulate Mayor Combs on a outstanding year of pandemic leadership, which is different than any other mayorship duties that people had to, you know, things that people had to contend with, but just really appreciate you bringing a steady hand and leading the city through the continually rash of issues that have emerged from the pandemic, everything from health to transportation, to the city streets, to businesses, to mask mandates, as well as leading the city through the housing element, just very appreciative of your leadership and look forward to continuing working with you. And I also wanted to extend my congratulations and welcome to what I believe will be incoming Mayor Betsy Nash and incoming Vice Mayor Jen Willison, very much looking forward to working with them in the upcoming year ahead. It's going to be a big year, lots to get done, and I just appreciate this council's leadership on so many issues, including environment. I'm also a proud Menlo Spark Board Member, so I appreciate your leadership on so many issues and look forward to working together in the year to come.
Thank you, Senator Becker. And our next speaker will be Charlotte Wilner.
Hello, Council, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Charlotte Wilner. I am a resident of District Four, and I'm here in my capacity as Vice President of the Board of Directors of GeoKids Early Childhood Center. I've been a resident of Menlo Park for 24 years. GeoKids is the school that my children have attended and currently attend, and GeoKids has been serving the local community of Menlo Park since 1987. It sits on the campus of the USGS that is now being discussed as part of a redevelopment project through the housing element. The GeoKids Board of Directors is pleased to hear that the City Council is considering zoning the property for educational purposes. We wholeheartedly agree that new residential development must take into account the educational needs of the families that will live in our neighborhoods. We would like to encourage the City Council to consider not just elementary and secondary education, but also early childhood education when discussing the needs of our community. Before the coronavirus pandemic, the 2017 Menlo Park Childcare and Preschool Needs Assessment found a deficit of over 500 childcare spaces in the city in the preschool age group alone. The city at that time was only meeting the needs of 37% of families looking for infant care, and GeoKids remains one of the only licensed childcare centers that accepts infants in the city. The pandemic has intensified the childcare shortage at both the national and local levels. Facilities like GeoKids not only provide high-quality education for children in those critical first five years of life, they also allow parents to remain in the workforce. Speaking in a personal capacity for a moment, I would have dropped out of the workforce if our first child had not found a place at GeoKids, a decision that research shows can have long-lasting consequences on lifetime earning potential. I've always been grateful that I was able to access quality childcare in my hometown. We must ensure that Menlo Park continues to be a place where parents can access it. As the City Council focuses on how to best use the space provided by the USGS property, our Board of Directors would like to remind you of the important role that GeoKids plays in supporting the young families of Menlo Park. We intend to continue providing high-quality childcare to members of our community from our current location. We're eager to work together with the council and with other members of the community to ensure that GeoKids 34-year legacy in Menlo Park continues long after the USGS property sale. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on item D, general public comment for items not on the agenda. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen. Thank you, Senator Becker, for the warm words, and I think you, Ms. Willner, for the public comment. Um, with that, we'll move on. The next item is the consent calendar, but before we get to the consent calendar, I do want to recognize earlier this week, there was a ceremony to honor employees of the city who had reached now anniversary milestones of their, of their service to the city. And I do want to recognize a few who had especially impressive milestones with regards to their, their tenure with the city. So those recognized at this ceremony and who I want to mention here now, who have been with the city for 20 years, Mary Jane MJ Salinas Acker, Melody Chow, Keith Dowdell, Eva Munoz, Renato Bell, Ariza Kachpor Bone, David Hill, Sabina Krotowski, Radina Fayal, and Juan Quinones have all been with the city for 20 years, and so I just want to recognize that as a pretty impressive accomplishment. And then there were three individuals recognized at the ceremony who had been, who have been with the city for 25 years, and so they started with the city before I was even born. So certainly in, worthy of recognition, and those three individuals who have been with the city for 25 years are Deborah Cavillo, Tony Dixon, and Rene Morales. Again, on behalf of the City Council, I congratulate you all for your, your long tenure with the city. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to improve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can we call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our consent calendar items, E one regarding a resolution to continue conducting City Council and advisory body meetings remotely, E two, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1080, which modifies the City Council's regular meeting schedule, item E three, adoption of an ordinance, modifying the municipal code for advisory bodies and commissions for district-based electoral system and the establishment of City Council electoral-based system, E four, adoption of an ordinance amending the specific plan, and an ordinance amending the development agreement for a project of 1,300 El Camino, E three, retaining professional services to support measure T bondage issuance, E six, adoption of a resolution, updating City Council Procedure 21-024, which is the city's purchasing policy, E seven, approving the 2022 City Council regular meeting schedule, or E nine, adopting fiscal year 2021, 22 budget amendments. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. You're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine now. So this will be the final call for public comment on any of our consent calendar items, E one through E nine. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So if my records are correct, E two, E four, E five, E seven. These were the ones that were not, not pulled. Does someone want to make a motion on them?
Excuse me, Mayor Combs?
Yeah.
Can we also pull E two?
Okay.
My apologies.
No worries. And so then E three, E four, E five, E three, E four, E five, and E seven have, have not been pulled. So does someone want to make, or I'll move that we, we approve the, those consent calendar items. Just one second.
How second, Mayor Combs?
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by City Council Member Taylor to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items E one, E two, E six, and E nine. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote? City Council Member Mueller?
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
City Council Member Willison?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great, thank you, City Clerk Karen. So going back, E one, which was pulled by Councilmember Taylor, I took notes this time so I can remember who pulled what.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and, and I just wanted to find out if the hybrid meetings can be made in option for the IRC.
Thank you, City Council Member Taylor. I may look to the City Attorney for clarification, but it's my understanding because the IRC is an independent body, they can direct staff to do either hybrid meetings or in-person or strictly virtual.
That's right. I agree with the city clerk. The statute that authorizes hybrid and in-person meetings allows each legislative body of the city to make the determination as to whether or not they wish to meet in person or on a remote basis due to health and safety concerns.
So, but just so we're clear, the IRC is the only commission of the city that, that has that?
No, my apologies. Every legislative body of the city, so every elected city council or appointed body, which includes the IRC, the planning commission. There's a lot of them.
Are those, are those legislative bodies? I mean, they all are just advisory bodies.
They're legislative bodies under the government code. All under the government code.
So the City Council could make a decision that all of its commissions should have hybrid meetings, but each commission could make a decision unto itself?
Correct.
Whether, so the Complete Street Commission could make a decision about meetings contrary to the decision that the City Council wants to make about the commissions?
Correct. The statute vests each legislative body with the authority conferred by the statute.
Councilmember Mueller?
I thought the only legislative body we had was the Planning Commission.
No, Brown Act bodies and bodies created with advisory and decision-making roles are legislative bodies under the California government.
Okay. I have a secondary question that it's not clear to me. The Independent Restricting Committee is obviously independent. Does that prohibit either direct or indirect contact with the City Council?
The council set up the IRC, and I'll answer this question, but this is not agendized. The IRC, the council set up the IRC to be an independent body, that there's no prohibitions on communicating with the City Council, but the City Council does not advise or direct the IRC.
Okay, so IRC members can reach out to the council members and talk to us?
That's right.
Thank you.
I mean, I'll just sort of chime in. I think I just, if this is the law, it's the law, but it's, it's sort of odd. Since the City Council controls all the means by which those bodies meet, like, right? The City Council controls the staff by which facilitates any meetings. The City Council controls the facilities by which those bodies have to meet. It seems odd that then they could make separate meeting decisions for themselves and not, not logical, if that is actually the law, because you have one body that essentially has control over another body in every other respect, other than in this, this instance where we're saying that they can make a decision if they want to. The Library Commission can make a decision that would thereby sort of tax city resources in a way that the City Council may not want.
Well, the state statute doesn't speak to resources. It speaks to determinations regarding health and safety.
But you have to use resources to have meetings. So it, I, I just want to sort of, you know, put a pin in that and say that I just find that interpretation, if that's the law, I find it odd and strange and illogical that you would have a body that would be, you would have, the Parks and Rec Commission would be able to make a decision on its meetings contrary to a decision that the City Council would want.
I think it's a good point, and I don't believe that all laws promulgated by our state are logical these days.
Totally fair point. Okay, but I do think, I would say that, like, even in that case, that would not, I certainly would see a situation where the IRC would, would certainly be out of that, that, that scope and would certainly have the ability and the authority to make those decisions since it is an independent commission. So, okay, so Councilmember Taylor, we've gone a little off script on here. Are you, are you comfortable with, well, does it matter if you're comfortable or not?
I only follow a question. I'm sure the answer is yes to this, but that all the members are aware that they have the power to request hybrid meetings.
Yes, thank you for the question, City Council Member Taylor. I have alerted the IRC of that. It's been brought up at various public meetings that they've already had, and I do believe they will be discussing it at their first public hearing in January, which is scheduled to be virtual currently, but it is, I believe, a topic of discussion that they will be bringing up.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll go to E two, Councilmember Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm following up on an email sent in by Mr. Jim Lewis, asking if there's any way to have time certain convening of City Council meetings that follow closed sessions. And as a former member of the public, I know how frustrating it can be waiting for a City Council meeting to start and having no idea how long. And I know, Mayor Combs, you've done a good job kind of approximating how long we think they're going to last, but I wanted to ask staff, the City Manager, if there's any way, as proposed by Mr. Lewis, or other way that other cities handle this, because I know this has come out multiple times.
I think the best way to approach that is to have the council, we can start earlier. So at the council's discretion, if we think there's going to be a closed session that will take an hour and a half, and we want to start at six, then we can start the meeting at 4:30 to attempt to bring the open meeting at six o'clock.
Councilmember Mueller, sorry, you've done, Councilmember Mueller.
Rather than starting the meeting earlier, may I suggest that the council might consider starting the meeting, the closed session, and then convening, not, and then interrupting the closed session to go ahead and start the meeting with the, and then later on in the, in the evening, going back into closed session. That way, we can keep our start times consistent for those of us who can't meet earlier.
And if I may, I mean, some jurisdictions do hold the closed session at the end of the meeting to avoid the point of delaying the meeting for the public. And so I think we can come up with options for the council.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Jerome Robinson. Yeah, I'd be interesting, at least trying out what Councilmember Mueller is proposing. I do know that sometimes we get really tired at 10:30 at night, but I think that's a good thing to test out and see how it goes. So I would, I would propose that we do that. And so would that require any modification to what we're voting on now?
Sorry, I don't think so. I think just general direction from the council is sufficient tonight.
Okay, so I would be in support of what Councilmember Mueller proposed. Thank you.
Okay, and so does that require a change to this consent calendar item in any way, or can it just be approved?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, totally fair. E six, Vice Mayor Nash?
So I will actually let Councilmember Taylor speak on this one first.
Thank you. I wanted to find out on this item if it's possible to bifurcate the City Council procedures from the SB 1383.
Well, I can try and answer that first, and then others can chime in. I think the point of the purchasing policy is to conform to SB 83, so we could look at specifics, and I think Management Analyst Joanna Chen can identify those for you if that's helpful.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, and City members. Could you, sorry, could you clarify your question a little bit more, Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, I wanted to find out, I see two actions here instead of one. I see one that's pertaining to SB 1383, and then adopting new City Council procedures, and so I'm wondering if they could be bifurcated. I'm not comfortable voting on it in one motion. I'd prefer to see it separately.
Sure. So the purchasing policy, the updated purchasing policy includes language from SB 1383, and that includes the, the procurement of the recycled paper products. So you'll see that in the purchasing policy. The other, the other action is the, the resolution to adopt the updated purchasing policy.
So my question is, is can we take them in two separate actions? This looks like one large action, increasing the signing authority, and then also updating our, our City Council policy and procedures. So can it be done separately?
Councilmember Taylor, it can be done separately as long as they're not in conflict.
So then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Willison?
Um, Councilmember Taylor and, and City Manager Jerome Robinson, I think it looks like there's things in this that relate to the 1383, but then it looks like there's a few additional things kind of added in. I believe Councilmember Taylor, are you asking to vote on the things necessary under state law for the trash recycling, but to hold off and wait on things that are unrelated to that?
Yes.
And again, I think we can. That's a definite yes, but I just want to make sure that there's complete clarity on our part of what we're not adopting.
Okay, so then this, then that can't be done at this moment, right? And so this item is just, is just held or continued?
Well, we, to comply with 1383, we need to adopt the components related to that by January 1st, so I don't think we can hold it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Nash, where you can?
So there's definitely parts that look like they're necessary for SB 1383. For example, the recycled paper product part, but then there's parts that seem, such as the emergency, a declared emergency, the increased purchasing power that seem like they're not related to 1383.
So if the council's more comfortable not proceeding with the emergency purchasing authority, then you can certainly not proceed with that tonight. I don't think that has any outcome on the SB 1383. It could, however, have a significant outcome on procurement practices during an emergency. But I mean, if the, if the council's not comfortable, I'd say let's proceed with what we're required to do tonight, and we can, we can bring the other back when you are more comfortable.
Councilmember Mueller?
Can I hear a policy reason why people aren't comfortable with it?
I'm not comfortable increasing the signing authority under the emergency order. Just not comfortable with it policy-wise. I don't think, just don't think it's good practice to increase it to $250,000.
May I? So in the time of emergency, it's going to be very difficult to convene the council and to go ahead and, and it'll also candidly, depending upon the amount of time it takes to convene all of us, have us vote, we very well could be in a situation where lives are at stake. I think that, you know, I think it's a rare circumstance, and that you have to, can be able to trust your city management to use their authority in that circumstance to try to help people. So I don't. I don't, if we're not going to trust the city management in that circumstance, who are we going to trust?
Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. So are we currently in a declared emergency? In other words, has this currently lasted for two years? And I think that is where I have some concern, is certainly within immediate, an immediate emergency, yes. I understand the need, but on a situation like this where we are still two years later in a declared emergency, it seems like it makes it very murky, and I would prefer to see that come to us separately.
Okay, just give us the direction, and that's what we'll do.
Mr. Pégares?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Nick Pégares, Assistant City Manager. The council's preference to bifurcate and remove the emergency purchasing authority for, or purchasing authority for, or award authority for the city manager this evening is, of course, your discretion. I do however strong, I would like to go on the record as saying the city absolutely does have to have an emergency procurement policy. It's something that we will need in the event that there is a FEMA claim. And if that, that needs to be on the books and on the records to Councilmember Mueller's point, the city manager will be asked in, in a time of of emergency to make decisions that are necessary to protect life safety and of property and of lives and property. And in order to do that, holding the increased signing authority is considered best practice.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I just would say, if you're worried about the city manager exercising their authority in a way that's reckless or irresponsible, that what we could do is we could go ahead and, and then put into a situation where there would be a reporting requirement every time the city manager exceeded their, the expending limit that they currently have in accordance with this in accordance with what we're doing here. And in that circumstance, if that were to happen in the thought and the, when that reporting took place and then we could say the reporting would have to take place within a week to let us know that they had gone and exercised their authority under this, under this resolution. If that being the case and the council's not happy with it, they can fire the city manager for, for using their authority recklessly. But I don't think we want to tie. I mean, even within the, I mean, Councilmember Nash, even within the pandemic right now, the pandemic changes rapidly. And there could be a circumstance where I would hate to see that, that we tied our city management's ability to go ahead and work with FEMA and external authorities to try to save lives. I just, I just, I think that we would be better off having a retrospective test that we could go ahead and force and say, look, you didn't need to do that.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilson.
I just have a couple of questions. Do we have, so it says it's for increasing it to two fifty during a declared emergency. Right now, there's no declared emergency spending limit?
There is a declared emergency.
I'm sorry, I mean, so right now, anything over seventy-nine thousand comes to us, even if it's on emergency items. So we don't have any kind of policy like this in place.
Correct, it's, but that's why we're proposing.
Okay. And then is there a definition? So these are the, the areas that it covers. So is that, it says procure goods and services consistent with any purchasing requirement. Can you give us examples of, of what that is? Like, is there a definition of what that is?
I think I would ask either Joanna or Joanna Chen, our Management Analyst, or Assistant City Manager Pigueros to respond to that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out, is it like, it's limited to things needed in the emergency?
That is the intention. And I think, you know, this has been an unusual emergency and there hasn't been that demand, but if there were an earthquake and we were trying to procure food for people so that they were, you know, it's an extended period of time and they weren't starving to death or water, because the water has been is no longer trusted, then we would want to have the emergency authority to proceed with that.
Okay. And then my last question, are there any, is this, do other cities have this kind of authority? Is this a common thing? And this, how did two fifty get arrived at?
I don't know that it's common. It is a best practice and it is related to the FEMA, to FEMA requirements.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I, I I think that it makes sense to be able to move quickly in an emergency and also to have the accountability and transparency that I think would make the council feel really comfortable in the community to kind of piggyback off what Councilmember Mueller was saying, some kind of reporting. I think sounds like a good kind of compromise. So that's kind of where I'm at on this. Thanks.
All right, well, then so with that, like if we were, let's put a pin in that and then go to, to E nine. Vice Mayor Nash. I'm sorry.
So on E nine, I was wondering for the three hundred thousand for the quiet zone CIP fund transfer and also for the six hundred thousand dollars for the Haven Avenue Streetscape CIP fund transfer. Are those going to wait until the monies have been received, especially on the Haven Avenue? My understanding was we were just going to be applying for the grant. So it seems premature to actually make the fund transfer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. These, for the quiet zones, for both the quiet zone and the Haven Avenue Streetscape Project, both of those are outside the interfund transfers. They, they're strictly setting up a revenue budget, so we're expecting to receive three hundred thousand and a corresponding and offsetting expenditure budget. So we expend, we, we will appropriate that three hundred thousand to the, to the Quiet Zone CIP.
Are we, I guess, that one makes much more sense because we know that it will be coming through the Haven Avenue. My understanding was we were just applying for the grant or do we know that we've received it?
I would have to defer to our Public Works Director on that.
And the reason why I'm asking is, so essentially we would be going ahead with the six hundred thousand regardless of whether or not that is received from the grant is what this applies to me if we're.
The grant funds are reimbursable. So the grant funds are received on a reimbursable basis. So we have to expend the money before we can receive the reimbursement.
But we don't know yet whether we're receiving the funds so that we might make it, I mean, have we made the decision that we're definitely doing that regardless of whether we've received the grant funds or not?
No, 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 we would not proceed with any expenditures unless the grant funds were received.
Okay, so we're moving the money, but we're not going to spend it until we know whether or not we receive the grant.
Correct.
If I may just offer, we're, we're not moving any funds. This is, it's within the same fund and they cancel each other out. The revenue is budgeted and the expense is budgeted, but there's no money coming from the general fund or any other fund into Fund Three Fifty-two.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Thank, thank you. Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director. And just to clarify the status of the funds for the Haven Avenue project. These were funds that were earmarked in the state budget thanks to Senators, State Senators Berman and Becker this year. And so we do expect to receive the funds, but the template resolution that you approved at your last meeting was to submit the application, but the funds are there and ready for the project once we submit all the documentation and it's approved from the state. So we have some steps we have to, to move through in order to officially get word that we will receive the funds, but they're, they're there. We're not competing with other projects for, for funding for this application.
So essentially this is a, we know that we're getting those funds. Okay.
Correct.
I just know that there's been a couple instances where we've applied for a grant, thought we were getting the funds and then they, for example, Middle Avenue. And so I'm just trying to avoid a situation where we're spending money that we think we're getting and then we don't. We didn't make a clear decision on that.
Okay, cool. So then I'm gonna make a motion that we approve consent, consent calendar items E one, E two and E nine. And is there, is there a second on that? I'm leaving out E six, we're going to get to that one. A second, okay, and Councilmember Wilson will say.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Wilson to approve consent calendar items E one, E two and E nine. Any further city council question or discussion?
Councilmember Mueller.
I'm sorry, I turned on my mic to vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And so with regards to E six, we were sort of coalescing around this idea of adding a reporting requirement for expenditures above a certain level. Like, right, because right now it's, it's just sort of the max goes to two hundred and fifty thousand. So what are we looking for in that noticing? Councilmember Wilson.
Mayor Combs, I believe it would be anything over the regular spending limit of seventy-nine thousand, so seventy-nine thousand to two fifty.
What would require reporting to the city council? Councilmember Taylor, would you like to chime in?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Just, we are eighteen months in a pandemic and I would be, I would consider this if this, if this were back in March of twenty twenty. And if we had some type of expense report regarding COVID, like immediate expenses the city had to use over the period of the past eighteen months. I just don't see the need to do it together with the SB eighteen thirteen eighty-three and then also just, I don't see the, the need for it. We're still in a pandemic and if a request came to council that was over the signing authority that was related to an emergency that were, anyone in Mellow Park didn't have any food or what have you shelter. At any rate, I'm just not comfortable voting on this, even with the reporting.
Um, Councilmember Mueller.
I think while the pandemic's an interesting example, the one that weighs in my mind is the storm we had over the last few days. Whenever we have a storm like that as a city council member, I'm not sure if you guys have started doing that yet. Whenever we have a storm that lasts a certain length of time, I find myself continuously checking the, the bridge report, the Chaucer Bridge Report, the Bridge Reports to see how the levels are rising. If we ever, if the day comes that we ever do have that flood, I'm gonna, we're gonna wish we had given the city manager the authority to go ahead and just start acting to help. And the same is true somewhat, the same is true if we ever have that big earthquake. And one of the things that will happen at that time is all the UFCs will turn on and then there will be a lot of people who need help. And they'll start trying to triage that. And I think having the city manager with the authority to go ahead and start helping people immediately here and make decisions reimbursable by FEMA is going to be something incredibly important.
Yeah, I, I'm going to support this. I do want to ask the city manager and the staff in the future because this agenda item seems ninety percent around the trash procedures. This would be nice to kind of come back as, because it seems almost like a separate topic. So I think there is just, I think when items come to council, it's good to make sure we don't bury the lead in, in some of these and that we are really clear what decisions we're making and stuff. So, but thank you.
Vice Mayor Nash.
So I agree with the comments that both Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Wilson said and because it says also that it shall only apply to goods or services necessary to protect an immediate or present threat to life, safety, public health or improved improved property. I'm assuming that at this point, it really is for that immediate emergency at the time. And at this point, eighteen months into an emergency, you would not be using this for something for a COVID-type pandemic. This really is for the earthquake flood, something where we cannot convene the council in a timely way.
That's correct. That's the intention, although, and hopefully we never have to use it for COVID.
True. So I will also support it with this, with the post-reporting requirement.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have one question and one comment. And the question is, will we still bifurcate it or is this going to be voted on in one motion?
The, it seems as though there, there is a, well, there hasn't been a motion. Makes a motion, but it seems as though there is consensus around not bifurcation, but adding this sort of reporting requirement for expenditures between seventy-nine thousand and a quarter of a million.
Okay. And my question is, I know at one point we did have a council subcommittee on updating the city council's policy. And my guess is because of the list that we have for this evening on our agenda that that subcommittee doesn't exist anymore. And I've just, my ask is that for something like this, it would be great if a council subcommittee weighed in on it first and then brought a recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, Mayor Combs, I'm so that Councilmember Taylor can vote against the portion of this that she's unhappy with, but still be able to support the secondary. I think we're all in agreement that this is going to come together as one piece and not be changed substantively from one to the other. I'm, I would be happy to have the motion be bifurcated so she could vote against the portion that she is uncomfortable with.
Okay, so I'm going to have you do that bifurcation.
Okay. A bit difficult to do. Can I ask the city attorney to go ahead and state it?
So.
Can I suggest something else? Can Councilmember Taylor vote against the resolution by lodging her objection with her dissent? So that we have one approval of the resolution and the procedures before us tonight?
Okay, well, given the city.
The city clerk thanks me for that.
Given the city attorney's concern, then I'll just move forward the resolution with the reporting requirement that should it be exercised over the set spending limit and seventy-nine thousand dollars, that there would be a report to council within seven days' time thereafter.
So just for clarification, are we only voting on the resolution with that reporting requirement and not the procedure or are we doing the full?
The full thing.
The whole thing and adding the reporting requirement.
Okay. So in that case, I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller. Do you want me to read the entirety of the motion?
Wait, wait one second, Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question on the reporting. Would that be in an info item on an agenda? So would the community know about it or is it a memo to council just?
I think it would need to be a memo to council or even an email, given the time constraint, right? We wouldn't necessarily have a meeting in a timely enough way to report out at a council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're looking for a second. Vice Mayor Nash.
I just wanted to clarify that the intent is that it, the seventy-nine thousand increases with the purchasing power of the city manager. Every year it increases so that it would follow the city manager's spending limit rather than be tied to seventy-nine thousand dollars.
That's correct. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got it first and a second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller and a second by City Councilmember Wilson to adopt a resolution rescinding resolutions number four, three, five, four, five, eight, three, two, six, four, seven, nine, and adopting city council procedure number CC dash two, one, dash zero, two, four, updating the city's purchasing policy to incorporate the new state requirements under SB thirteen eighty-three and to establish new processes and procedures and direct the city manager to provide the city council with reports when expenditures are equal to or more than the city manager's spending authority. Any further city council question or discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, please go, Councilmember.
Thank you. I just I, I would ask the city attorney to repeat what she said about how I'm able to vote so that I can still vote yes on one part and no on the other.
I don't think, and obviously the city attorney can speak for herself, but I, as I understood, she was saying you could vote no, but then provide clear reasoning as to why you were voting no and that you were not voting no because of opposition to the entirety of the resolution, but specifically because of the inclusion of the allowing for the spending authority up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think that that's what she, she was articulating, that you just vote no. I I think that that's what she she was articulating, um, that you just vote no and and be very explicit for why you're voting no.
Thank you.
Any other for through city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City councilmember Taylor.
No, and I'm voting no. I support SB thirteen eighty-three. I do not support increasing the city manager's signing authority.
Thank you. City councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes with city councilmember Taylor dissenting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Corrigan. Um, with that, we'll move on to the regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. As I said, we're we're reordering regular business a little bit, and so we'll take up F six first, adopt a resolution directing the city manager and the city attorney to develop an interim guidance, rules and regulations for implementation of Senate Bill nine, also known as SB nine, before January first, twenty twenty-two. Here to present the item is acting planning manager Cal Perlata. Yeah. Mr. Perlata.
Kyle, are you able to engage your webcam and microphone?
Let's see. Good evening, Mayor Combs and Vice Mayor Nash. Is everyone able to hear me? I'm having some audio issues on my end here.
Yes, we are. We're able to hear you, Kyle. Are you able to hear us?
Okay, so my computer is telling me my audio doesn't work, but it looks like it does, so thank you, sorry for the choppy start here. Thank you, Mayor Combs and Vice Mayor Nash and members of the city council. I do have a presentation, so let me share my screen. So I'm here to present uh, the city's Senate Bill nine guidance, rules and regulations. So let me just move on here, so uh, city staff recommends tonight that the city council adopt a resolution directing the city manager and city attorney to prepare interim guidance uh, rules and regulations for the implementation of Senate Bill nine, also referred to as SB nine, and I'll use SB nine uh, throughout the rest of the presentation. The draft resolution uh, before the council tonight is in attachment A of the staff report. That resolution identifies the city manager and city attorney will bring back a future ordinance as well, incorporating objective standards for SB nine projects, so we'll get to that towards the end of the presentation. So by way of background, SB nine also referred to as the California Homes Act. This new legislation will become effective on January first, twenty twenty-two, excuse me for the typo here. First time I caught that today. SB nine requires ministerial review of two-unit housing development projects on single-family zone parcels. There are specific criteria that SB nine sets forth that have to be met for these projects. In addition to the requirement for the city to ministerially permit two units on a single-family parcel, it does also require ministerial review of lot splits. So these existing single-family zone parcels could be split into two lots roughly equal size with a minimum of one thousand two hundred square feet in size for each resulting lot. That would allow for up to four units with uh, implementation of the two provisions from SB nine, the the duplexes on a single-family lot and the lot split. Most single-family zone lots in city do meet the criteria for SB nine. One other thing to note is that SB nine does not require ministerial review of single-family dwelling units on existing single-family zone lots. It applies to duplexes and then the two unit or the two lot split. Just right here, we have a, for reference, a map of the single-family zoning districts throughout the city. Those are shown in different shades of yellow with the non-single-family and multifamily or multifamily, commercial and industrial districts in gray for reference. So the requirements of SB nine, uh, there there's two main components here. The development standards for urban duplexes. The the legislation in SB nine does uh, reserve for the city and local governments that they can impose local standards. But those standards must be objective, not subjective in nature. The standards cannot preclude development of two units of at least eight hundred square feet and does have some requirements for maximum side and rear setbacks of four feet. So you, and then one parking space may be required. There are specific criteria, though, in certain circumstances where no parking spaces are required, are able to be required by the local jurisdiction within, uh, for projects within a certain approximated transit or um, car share locations. The second component of SB nine is urban lot splits. And so for those, uh, maximum of two parcels can be split from an existing single-family lot. Like I said previously, those new parcels need to be approximately equal in size and a minimum of one thousand two hundred square feet. With regard to that approximately equal size, it could be a sixty forty split, so sixty percent, forty percent, uh, but roughly equal is is a criteria. The same standards and provisions for urban urban duplexes would apply uh, to developments on the urban lot splits. And an applicant must occupy at least one of the units as a principal residence for three years. Uh, so what's before the council tonight is a recommendation for the council to direct the city staff to develop interim guidance, rules and regulations. Um, and so part of that is because the city is limited to applying only objective standards to SB nine development projects. Our zoning ordinance currently does include various objective standards. And as part of these interim guidance rules and regulations, this staff is requesting additional interim objective standards and guidance mainly for two items. One to define floor area limit for lots of less than five thousand square feet. And for this, I do have an update uh, for the attached resolution and attachment A. Currently, section three of that resolution uh, identifies a request or identifies that the city council authorizes the city manager and city attorney to incorporate into the interim guidance rules and regulations a new standard for floor area limit uh, for lots less than five thousand square feet. And it currently states uh, where the maximum floor area limit is sixteen hundred square feet. Staff is recommending that the, where the maximum floor area limit is sixteen hundred square feet be stricken from the resolution to allow staff to further evaluate an appropriate FAL standard. Uh, in addition, the interim guidance recommendation is to prohibit ADUs or accessory dwelling units uh, for projects that develop duplexes as part of a lot split, so there'd still be the ability to develop four units in total, but without EDUs additionally. Um, and staff will incorporate these interim guidance or variation of of these into a formal SB nine ordinance that would be brought back to the city council uh, in twenty twenty-two. So conclusion and next steps, SB nine overall is intended to spur additional housing development by those projects under SB nine being permitted ministerially. And the city, as I said previously, is required to apply objective standards to SB nine projects. As part of the follow-up actions from tonight's meeting, staff will prepare and publish interim guidance by January one, twenty twenty-two. These interim guidance will be used by staff and applicants until a formal SB nine implementation ordinance is adopted. We'll make this guidance available on the city's website. Ultimately, the formal SB nine implementation ordinance will be reviewed by the planning commission and city council. Through that process, member of the public may provide comments and input through the planning commission and city council public hearings. One thing to note, uh, due to the need to adopt the SB nine ordinance expeditiously, uh, that will limit staff outreach. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perlata. Um, City Corrigan, can we call for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F six, adopt a resolution directing the city manager and city attorney to develop interim guidance, rules and regulations for implementation of SB nine before January one, twenty twenty-two, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Karen Grove.
Hi, um, Karen Grove. I'm on the Housing Commission, but speaking for myself. This took me by surprise, so I have not read the full staff report and maybe it's in there, but I am wondering about the proposal to limit or to preclude ADUs in one of the situations, I think, when, under lot splits, anyway. Why preclude ADUs? I mean, the the point is to build as many homes as we can. I I I guess I'd sort of object to that limitation, even in the interim guidelines. Maybe with more thought and underst- more thought on my part, more understanding on my part, and you may have thought it through. But anyway, I I would love further inquiry onto the prohibition of ADUs and the the thinking beyond beyond that. It seems limiting to me, perhaps unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Safi Design Group.
Hi, I'm a, I'm a local design architect. I have a couple of projects that are coming into the city in the next few weeks, so I just wanted to make sure I I understand the code correctly. Do, under this new rule, uh, does that change any of the FAL regulations on the a single family with with an ADU? And then also two-story residences, are those who are still going to go through the hearing process or commission hearings or or not? Is that going to change to an administrative process? And going forward? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for a public comment on item F six. Looks like our final speaker will be Brittany Baxter.
Hi, thank you, Brittany Baxter, District Three resident. Also, just kind of skimming the staff report right now. Definitely appreciate the effort that went into making this pretty sensible for property owners to start out without too many esoteric regulations before we know, you know, what will really happen as a result of this law, so really appreciate that. Similar to what Karen Grove mentioned, I would love to see more flexibility for ADUs. I think it would give families just more options on the table, right? You wouldn't have to think about, you know, which of your parents could live in the ADU. You can have both sets of parents living in ADUs on your lot, on your property. So I'd really just love to leave as many options open as possible for people. I also just heard that we're thinking about um, the floor area limit and kind of what that should be. Also would love to keep that on the larger side, given that um, we just, again, want to leave options open for people to build housing on these lots. Um, and I would also love to see the option for property owners to choose what they want to do in terms of parking. Um, I know we already have, you know, a pretty wide range there where parking would not be required. But as we think about our climate goals, as we think about the awesome dense walkable neighborhoods that this would result in, it would just be great to let property owners make that choice. I'm also just really excited for duplexes in particular. I actually lived for a number of years on Forest Avenue, um, in a duplex and a lot with another duplex and really liked that street. It's really cute and vibrant. It's very walkable. It's also older. That street was built, at least our unit was built in the twenties. Um, and so I think it really just kind of speaks to this very walkable, dense, vibrant kind of neighborhood that we used to have here and, you know, we're kind of returning to. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Corrigan. So going back to Mr. Perlata, are you able to address those questions that came up in public comment?
Sure, thank you. Uh, I I had some audio issues, but I think I got the gist of them. So with regard to the ADU question, uh, so with regard to the staff recommendation here, it it's really for projects, uh, the, uh, to remove or, excuse me, so for projects where you take advantage of both provisions of uh, SB nine. So both provisions here being uh, or urban duplexes as well as urban lot splits. You would be in through SB nine able to provide or to develop four units in total. Um, and so staff's recommendation is to for for projects that take advantage of both of those to prohibit ADUs uh, on each of those lot splits, uh, so effectively keeping it at four units. You could still, if you were to split the lot, but only provide one main dwelling on each lot, provide an ADU as well. So you still, still would be at that four-unit um, potential development uh, with regard to SB nine applicability as well as the city's ADU ordinances. So so effectively, there there's some nuances there that I didn't explain in detail in the presentation that would allow for ADUs, but it it's really for projects to take advantage of both provisions of SB nine with regard to ADUs. And and so then, uh, I'll I'll pause there and then move on to FAL and then take any questions. So uh, in in term in terms of the floor area limit, uh, you know, we are removing the limitation of sixteen hundred recommendation at this point to allow us to look at that further with regard to how the FAL limit for lots less than five thousand should be developed through the interim guidelines or interim guidance document as well as the future ordinance, so that's something we can continue to to look into based on the public comments.
Right, that, thank you, Mr. Perlata. So bringing it back up to the, I guess, councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I mean, I would just comment that SB nine actually is, when the legislation was passed, was the bot, was the, was actually in the, within the legislation, limited whether or not you could have an AT, ADU or junior ADU, a lot split. So anything deviation from that is actually going further than SB nine. But that's actually, you know, that was something that was within the legislature that was discussed and debated. So it's not something that's being additive from our city, but actually it sounds like we might be lessening it, uh, lessening the requirement the state had. My first question actually for staff is, are we voting tonight just providing direction? Cause I believe this will be coming back to us for a final vote. Is that, is that correct?
The resolution that's before you this evening, we are asking you to approve it, but the resolution just directs staff to create interim guidance that would the the resolution that's before you tonight, we we are asking staff to approve the resolution. The res- the resolution directs staff to create an interim guidance document that would essentially serve as a stopgap until staff comes back with a permanent ordinance. And the permanent ordinance would be more encompassing and do more than with the resolution this evening is doing.
But if we pass that resolution tonight, between the time we pass the resolution and the permanent ordinance, can someone make an application?
Correct. Starting on January first.
And if we don't do, uh, if we don't pass that resolution tonight, do we have until we pass, what's the timing of when we have to have a permanent ordinance in place?
So the state law takes effect January first and ideally, we'd have an ordinance in place on January first. Only those cities that are adopting emergency urgency ordinances will have ordinances in place by January first because of the timing of when the bill was approved. It requires planning commission, two readings and a thirty-day effective period. So this resolution, like I said, it's a stopgap measure so that the council can provide staff on direction, provide staff direction on standards that the council would like to see included in this interim guidance document that will apply to projects that come in after January first until an ordinance is adopted.
So that leads me to my next question, is that is, why would we do? So why are we doing, why would we do anything more than what was required by, why, why wouldn't we just let the state ordinance go into effect?
Well, the state ordinance does go into effect on January first, regardless of if we do nothing.
But why wouldn't we just adopt the state ordinance?
I'm sorry, what?
Why wouldn't we just adopt the state ordinance?
SB nine doesn't have like a mandatory state adoption requirement like SB ten, so we, the state laws apply to us as the city, regardless of if we do anything. What the resolution before you tonight does is it says, staff, prepare a guidance document that goes out to all applicants for SB nine urban lot splits and urban duplexes that does three things. One, it incorporates all existing objective standards that would already apply to urban lot splits and urban duplexes. Two, it invokes the standards reserved from state by the state to city discretion, including the ADU standard that you were just referencing and that Mr. Pirata was explaining. And then three, it also directs staff to establish a new objective standard regarding floor area limitation, because on certain lots in the city, no such objective standard currently exists.
Okay. My question is that the SB nine has a, has a clause in it that states that because one of the issues with the three nine is you want to make sure that it's just not speculation taking place in development. So there's, there was a well, actually, a well-debated clause actually inserted by Senator Becker that said that there needed to be owner occupancy for three years to enjoy the benefit of SB nine. And my question, my first question is, what happens if someone doesn't actually follow through and occupy for, for three years? Is the, are the rights conferred revoked by the city, or what, what happens? Because that goes to enforcement then afterwards.
Yeah, it would, it would likely, but again, we, you know, we haven't developed the ordinance, but I anticipate that in the ordinance that we bring back to you, there would be some sort of enforcement action. We'll likely recommend the requirement that a deed restriction be recorded, requiring the continued occupancy, so that subsequent buyers are on notice, and there's a cloud on title if there's a violation.
Okay, and that brings me to the next question I had, and the debate on SB nine at the state legislature, and I, and I believe since then, there, there was no, there was, it was allowable, I believe it was, it was brought up, and I believe that the state, state legislative council indicated, in one of the hearings, that it was actually allowable to have deed restrictions to go ahead and mandate that the new units created be affordable housing. Is that?
Deed restrictions on the affordability levels.
Yeah, and so basically, because again, we're not looking for speculation, we're looking to create affordable housing, so that the, so that when the city actually confers the right to do the lot split and to create the units, that those units must, that the city has the ability to indicate through a deed, a deed restriction, that those be affordable units. Councilor Nash, Vice Mayor Nash.
So my understanding is that Millbury just required that half of the, their units generated by SB nine are, must be affordable at an eighty percent of median level.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, so if they did, my understanding is that we do have that ability as a council to go ahead and put those restrictions in place as a, as a deed restriction. And that's something that, and so, I mean, very candidly, that's why I'm asking, okay, what we do tonight, there's going to be a window of time that people might want to try to jump to, to get their applications in before we get, so is that a true concern? That we should have that in the resolution this evening?
So if I could follow up with you, Vice Mayor Nash, you said Millbury enacted a sort of requirement that fifty percent of, like, sort of the units generated by this provision. But then, so like, how do you enforce that on a specific parcel? Like, right, is, is that requirement holistic? That they like to see like fifty percent of all of the units generated by this as affordable?
I don't know.
Right.
But yes, what I, what I took away from it is that Millbury has required that half of the units must be affordable at an eighty percent of median level, and I don't know exactly how they're implementing that.
So the first unit, I mean, the way you could say that, you could say the first unit has to be affordable, like, and then if you're doing the four, two of them have to be affordable. Right?
Yeah, I'm assuming it's the same owner as well, but I don't know for sure.
So, but I, like, so like, if you, so is it, in Millbury, is it saying, like, if you do a lot split, that, that, that unit generated has to be affordable?
If you only do one, it would have to be affordable. If you're doing two, presumably, the second, well, presumably, actually, the second would have to be affordable to still have fifty percent on the lot, and then the third could be market rate. So, but that's the details, like, we would have to, I'd be interested in discussing this evening. And then the final question I have that overshadows all of this is that there's this SB nine initiative out there, and I don't know what the effect is if someone has to occupy the the resident for three years, and then the SB nine initiative occurs, so I think you're probably still grandfathered in that you started your project, but I wanted to, I think, I think that's the case, but I wanted to see if there's any effect that the initiative would have on, on any of this. So to my colleagues, I think, I think I know the answer to that, so I'll just drop that, but, but I, what I, what I would say is I'm not interested in going further than the legislation, because the legislation was hard fought, and the legislation was was hard negotiated. I am interested, however, in looking at, when I say not going further, I mean, making it easier. I am interested in looking at the deed restrictions to make sure that we are generating affordable housing. And then I'm very interested in discussing what the enforcement mechanisms are to make sure that people are staying or that those owners are at those homes for three years and enjoying, enjoy, to enjoy what SB nine confirms. Thank you. And the reason why all of that is because I think the true intent of SB nine, and the reason it was passed, was to create affordable units and to make sure that it's not just property speculation for profit. And I don't know how many emails or texts you get, but I am inundated with people every day texting me or every week texting me, asking me to buy my house for cash in the city, which is really an interesting development. And so I do want, I, I do believe that there is very much an interest in acquiring property in Menlo Park and subdividing that property by people who don't, by companies who don't live in Menlo Park. And so I want to make sure that we put in place the proper controls to make sure that there isn't speculation taking place and that we are truly creating affordable housing as a result of, of moving forward.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So the resolution and the staff report discusses substandard lots less than five thousand square feet. But I know we have a lot of substandard lots in the city that are not, that are larger than five thousand square feet. So I'm curious, I guess this would be for Mr. Pirata, what the would that also be something you're looking into as you look to develop an ordinance? Or how would that, that be handled? Because I know you get, the planning commission, you get a lot of houses coming to you that are substandard.
Thank you, that's a good question. So, so right now, we're not, staff is not proposing to modify the review process for the, what you're referring to is the use permit process for development on a substandard lot, or the other possibility is the non-conforming structure clause of our ordinance. So for single-family developments that are a true single-family dwelling unit, we're not proposing a modification to the review process. What we're looking at right now with this resolution is the direction to develop interim FAL guidelines or standards for lots less than five thousand square feet. There, there are a number of those currently in the single-family zoning districts, but there could be more with the urban lot split provisions, so like a seven thousand square foot lot could be thirty-five hundred square foot each for two lots. So, so those are what we're, we're looking to get direction on for, for the FAL in the interim guidance document, and ultimately in a formal ordinance in twenty twenty-two.
So if it's a, I'd say an eight thousand square foot lot, and someone lot splits it, how, so what, what would be the FAL for that situation?
Right, so
to the planning commission, is that?
So, so right now, you, there isn't a floor area limit defined for lots less than five thousand square feet, so that's where we don't have an objective standard, and we do, the city does need an objective standard, so.
So the city does have an objective standard for substandard lots over five thousand square feet?
Yeah, and so maybe as a way of background here to kind of explain, so the floor area limit definition for a lot of five thousand square feet to seven thousand square feet, it's, it's set at twenty-eight hundred square feet as the max floor area limit for any development within the, a lot of that size. Lots greater than seven thousand have a, a floor area limit formula that we, we apply, it's in our ordinance, that, that basically for every additional square foot, there's a a ratio that gets applied in that calculation. So you, you then have a, a ten thousand square foot lot is somewhere in the three thousand, thirty-five hundred square foot range. I don't know it off the top of my head right now, but we do have a floor area limit for lots over five thousand square feet, even if it's a substandard lot. What we're talking about here is those lots less than five thousand, where we currently have the planning commission define or identify the floor area limit for the development.
Okay, that's really helpful. Another question is, I know that flood zones and fire zones are exempt. So Bellhaven and I know some of the Willows and, do you have a map that, just for the public, so they have a sense of what is and is not included for SB nine?
So I do have a map, let me share my screen. So, so this map here, it's, it's a little difficult with all the different land uses in the flood zone, but it does show you the flood zones overlaid on the, on the residential zoning districts, and so there is a flood zone through the Willows where the San Francisco Creek flood, could flood. And then within the Bellhaven neighborhood, you can see the blue flood zone coming from the bay, as well as the continuation of the San Francisco Creek flood zone. What I think is important to note here, though, is that while SB nine does have some language regarding floodplain construction, the city's floodplain ordinance within the municipal code does have standards and requirements that any development within a flood zone would have to meet, which effectively is consistent with the federal law from a FEMA standpoint, and so removes that structure from the flood zone. So development could occur on a flood zone property under SB nine, is, is our understanding currently, because we have a floodplain ordinance that permits development when criteria are met for FEMA and the city's local floodplain development.
Thank you. So to, so to clarify, I'm seeing in District one, a lot of area between Ivy and Hamilton that might be in a flood zone towards Chilco, and then quite a big part of the Willows, and then even some of Southus Seminary. So you're saying, because we have kind of mitigate, mitigated mitigation requirements in our permitting that, like, we allow single-family homes to be built in these areas, so the same kind of standard would be applied to these duplexes and whatnot?
That's correct, that's our understanding.
Okay, and in terms of wildfire or fire zones, is that a factor up in the hills?
So I, I don't, I, I might need to, to look for some additional guidance from additional staff, but I don't believe any of, well, perhaps some of the hillside developments, yes, I mean, the majority of the city's not in a wildfire hazard zone, but we certainly, if, if a property in the hillsides, you know, closer to two eighty, were within that, that would preclude SB nine, but I, I don't know number of parcels or where those zones are drawn right now.
Do we have any similar mitigating permitting standards like we have for flood, for fire? This is more, this is more my curiosity than it's to the decision tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't believe we have those. I also don't believe there are any parcels in that hazard area that we're talking about, so, so this is a little bit out of my realm of expertise to answer right now. We can certainly follow up separately.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Mayor Combs, do you want me to kind of say what I'm thinking, or do you want to wait and finish questions?
I'm, I'm fine with you saying what you're thinking.
Okay, um, thank you. So, um, I, my interpretation of SB nine and the state law is, you know, affordable units are obviously, we need a lot of those, and they're wonderful. My feeling about SB nine, it's, it's really about the missing middle. It's about creating housing stock for kind of people who can't afford a single-family home, but who don't necessarily need affordable housing. And so I see this as kind of unlocking opportunity in a lot of our neighborhoods that are very exclusive right now. So I, I'm not interested in making it harder for these duplexes and lot splits to be done. And I don't want any kind of floor area ratio or floor area limits to be more prohibitive than what we have for single-family homes. So I, I understand Councilmember Mueller not wanting to make it going above and beyond the law, but given the types of housing we need, and especially when we look at how we do on our arena numbers every year, and kind of that moderate number, and how we're hitting our moderate number, which is that number that, that we, our families need and our teachers need, and, and, you know, we need housing at all income levels. So I see this as kind of a different category of housing stock that will bring a lot more walkable, desirable community feels, and that I know several people have written in about solar access, and perhaps my colleagues will bring that up. But I don't, I think the best thing we can do for the climate is get more housing in our areas where people aren't having to do mega commutes and pollute greenhouse gas emissions into the air. So I, I get the desire not to go way above and beyond SB nine, but I also don't want to make it too hard for, for these things to be built, because I think they can be a really great thing. And for those of you who don't know, we have a lot of duplexes in my neighborhood, and you know, they can be done in the same footprint. I know Thomas James, we have developers and a lot of residents talking about these single-family homes maxing out floor area ratios. And you can imagine, instead of these kind of big homes going on these smaller lots, you could actually unlock the, the housing for multiple families on these lots, and, and how amazing that could be for, for a street in a neighborhood. So those are my thoughts, and I, I don't know where anyone is on this issue. So I look forward to hearing my colleagues' opinions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Thank you. So I am interested in making sure these homes are affordable to middle income. I agree that we, my concern is that eighty percent of median income is still a high price tag, and what we- And what we don't want is lots of additional houses that are not affordable. And so I don't know that at this point, we should be putting on, putting restrictions on, but I certainly would like to track what we're doing and what kind of housing we're getting and see if we need to in the future restrict the affordability of the units, just to. What, what will we be getting from SB9? I guess one question I have right off is whatever we decide is part of this regulation, that does not restrict us for the future ordinance, the ordinance, this, all it does is it just dictates what someone can do between the time that, between January 1st and whenever we implement an actual ordinance.
That's right.
So we could go, we could see what our experience is and actually respond to that in the ordinance.
That's right. There, there is, there is a persuasive need to bring an ordinance back swiftly. So we might consider not studying every possible angle that would be the most effective for addressing SB9 before bringing an ordinance back, but bringing an ordinance back swiftly and then making modifications to it as needed.
That sounds good. Excellent. Thank you. And then now that Councilmember Mueller is back, I'm curious. I would think that we actually do have some wildfire hazard zones, possibly up in, in District Five by the Stanford Hills. And it's just right where it backs up onto Slack and large fields of very dry weeds. So I think that we should, unless Councilmember Mueller knows at this point, whether or not we have wildfire zones, I would like to have that looked at and just make sure that we're doing whatever we can.
We absolutely do. It's absolutely, it's absolutely, that area is absolutely in the wooey, uh, wild line, wildfire urban interface zone.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So. I guess I, I'm happy that we're doing something. I would like to see some sort of FLORIA area limitations for the smaller, the properties below 5,000 square feet as you were proposing. And I'm, I think this sounds good. I would also request that when we do get something to put on a website, that it's put on both websites, our old one and the beta one. Or that there's some link that, just so that if someone goes to the old website, that they are able to find the material. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Just, just some sort of more process questions for either the city attorney or Mr. Prada. So is every city doing this? Adopting these interim, this sort of interim ordinance or interim direction with regards to SB9?
Cities are addressing it differently, we've found in my experience with other clients is that some cities are doing what staff is, and I are proposing this evening. Some cities are waiting and doing nothing and developing permanent ordinances. And some cities are adopting emergency urgency ordinances based on health and safety findings.
And so this, the situation for the cities that are doing nothing are just focusing on the actual permanent ordinance. What is the state of their reality on January 1st?
What's the state what? Sorry, didn't hear.
What are they, what position are they in on January 1st? For those, those cities who obviously don't have an interim ordinance, don't have an emergency ordinance and are, you know, just sort of working on a permanent ordinance, which obviously won't, won't be in effect for January 1st.
The, those cities are, they have available to respond to applications for SB9 urban lot splits and duplexes, existing objective standards that apply to primary dwelling unit development on single family lots. They may not have available to them the standards reserved to city discretion by the state laws. Um, and they certainly don't have the ability to impose additional new objective standards. The state law includes a number of standards that apply and preempt cities' regulations regardless of what cities have done. And then, and those of course apply to cities that do nothing.
Okay. I think I, I think I understand.
So a good, a good way to think of it is the, the state mirrored the SB9 regulations off of the regulatory structure that they created for ADUs. And so the way that SB9 works is similar to the way the ADU laws work, which is the state says, cities, you have to permit this new kind of development if the following things can be met. And then there's a bunch of state standards. And hey, by the way, cities, you can impose these limitations as long as they fit into these very well-defined buckets. And so for cities that do nothing, they don't get any of the standards that fill, that, that fall within those buckets. The, the standards reserved to city discretion by the state. But all the state standards are imposed on cities regardless of if we do nothing or, or adopt an ordinance.
And so in those cases, well, like if a standard i- in the middle part case exist, is this in a R1 situation normally? Right? In the split situation, it just won't, it, it just sort of is a moot point. And, and an applicant only has to abide by those provisions outlined by the state. Like if this, if the city does not act.
That's right. And one of the things that the state has put into our bucket is you can apply existing objective standards that would otherwise apply to primary dwelling units or urban lot splits. So everything we have in our Muni code, in our general plan, in our downtown specific plan, that, that all those standards contained in those documents that have been adopted in our objective nature, they, they would continue to apply to these developments. But without adopting an ordinance establishing new objective standards, we don't have anything that speaks directly to SB9 urban lot splits and SB9 duplexes. Because right now our code would prohibit you from subdividing a single family dwelling lot and turning it into two lots with a duplex on each lot. That wouldn't be prohibited. State, that wouldn't be permissible. State has come in and said you have to permit that. So we don't like ADUs. We don't have standards on the books when SB9 was, became effect, or when SB9 was approved and signed, that, that tell us like, that, that tell applicants what to do and what standards apply to them when they're splitting a single family dwelling lot, adding a duplex to each of the new lots.
Yeah. So where are we at here, Vice Mayor Nash?
So if we did not adopt a resolution, the objective standards that you mentioned would still apply? They just wouldn't be consolidated in one place and?
That's right. And, and the, the interim guidance document that staff is working on, it's not going to necessarily contain every objective standard. They're going to do their best to go through the zoning code, the general plan, the specific plan and pull out for ease of applicants' reference. Those standards they anticipate to be most relevant and needed for urban lot splits and urban duplexes. But this staff will still be able to rely on other existing objective standards that they don't specifically pull out and put in the guidelines.
So wait, though now I'm confused again. I, I thought the whole point was that those objective standards would only apply if we acted tonight.
Not, sorry, not existing ones. Existing standards apply regardless of if we do anything.
Okay. And so we would, and we would be talking about the standards in the case of like a, you know, a, a single family dwelling situation, right? Those are the standards that would apply in a lot split.
Exactly. Exactly.
Councilmember Taylor. Oh, I mean, your hand just went up right now. It wasn't up.
I had a feeling it was my turn. Thank you, Mayor Combs. I, I have a question about ADUs and that is what is the minimum lot size currently for ADUs?
So the state laws specifically prohibit cities from imposing a minimum lot size on ADUs that would prohibit the construction of an internal conversion ADU or an 800 square foot attached or detached ADU. And to the extent the city has any city-specific minimum lot size requirements, I'd ask someone from community development to reference those. Or I could look them up, but I don't know, I don't know the city lot size requirement off the top of my head. But maybe, uh, I don't know if Deanna's available, but she may know.
I, I can take that question. So we, we don't have a minimum lot size within the city for ADUs?
Thank you. I appreciate you following up with me. My next question, well, a statement is that I am actually supportive of Councilmember Willison's recommendation about going above and beyond, especially addressing concerns for housing for the missing middle. See, and I think most of my other questions were already answered regarding the flood zone. So my, oh, I wanted to follow up just with the, one of the emails that was sent to CCIN and that is addressing concerns about accessing sunlight for those that want to have a solar. Is there a way to implement something into our objective standards that would address this concern?
So I'll turn it over to Planning, um, CDD to address the specifics. But yes, that's something that we could do when we bring back a permanent ordinance.
So I think to follow up, yeah, we'll, we'll need to look at that. One thing to note, as talked about throughout the discussion tonight is, is that standard would need to be objective, not subjective. So, so we would have to look at how to quantify it into an objective standard, but it's certainly something we can, we can look into.
Thank you. And that would be a council direction or is that something you're automatically going to do?
So I, I think to that point, if, if that is something that council's interested in having staff look at as part of developing the interim guidance document, or rather this is probably something that would be for the formal or implementing SB9 ordinance. We can certainly look into that if that's the council's direction, perhaps as part of the motion that could be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. And so then the deet restrictions that Councilmember Mueller and Vice Mayor Nash were talking about aren't currently in these interim provisions. And so that would need to be added. Could that be added tonight? Like as, is, is part of an addition?
I think I, go ahead, please.
Okay. Kyle, you jump in, but I would not recommend adding, directing staff to include that tonight. I think that that's something that staff will want to look at the feasibility of a 50% moderate low income requirement is very high. Elsewhere in the city, we have 15% low income wherever else in the city. So that's something that we will want to look at and bring back to you to determine if it renders, if it's feasible.
But it can only be 50%, right? I mean, cause in all these cases, like right, you're just splitting a lot and creating another unit, right? And the whole issue is like whether that additional unit is market rated or whether it's not, right? And so like, like obviously if you're building a hundred unit complex or something, then you can lean towards 15% or 20%. But if the whole idea of this provision is that all of those new housing units are affordable, then if it's not feasible, then the, and I have certainly have not followed the machinations on this and the legislature to the extent that Councilmember Mueller has had. But if it's not feasible, but that all of those new units are actually affordable, then the law is, it, it's, its value is undercut. If, as it has been argued, that that was the exact value of the law, that, that was the, you know, the impetus behind it was the, was this, was not necessarily just generating new housing units, but specifically generating affordable housing units. So it's either you generate affordable housing units or no housing units gets generated because that's, that's the value add. And so I would be comfortable with adding that provision. And if the result is, is imfeasible, then the law is imfeasible. It was flawed from the beginning. Councilmember Willison, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Nash. Or anyone, just go.
Yeah, I think I had my, my light on. I think that, I, I think that the definitions of affordable and missing middle are a little nebulous in terms of the intent of the law. And I'd have to go back and like watch all the hearings again, exactly how it was like marketed. But like I said, my understanding of like duplexes and lot splits in general is more about this missing middle housing stock. And I think doing things to make it more infeasible, to have it realized, to me doesn't serve our future as a city and our climate goals and our desire to have a vibrant, family-oriented city where our kids can move in. I think if I look at these single family homes being built, we're talking about speculation. There's already speculation happening with these single family homes. And what's happening is we have, you know, an 1,800 square small home from the, I don't know, the 50s or whatever, being torn down. And a 3,000 square foot maxed out home is being built and being sold for around three and a half million dollars. And if instead, let's just say there's not a lot split, but the old house gets torn down and now we get a duplex that each sells for two million or two and a half million. So is that affordable? How are we defining affordable? But does that unlock new opportunities for a different type of person to move into our community, to make our community actually have the people that we need to, to operate as a, as a city and as a region? I think it does. I think I might've given the example of my sister-in-law who wanted to move here, they're in tech, but you know, they couldn't afford, you know, three and a half million, but they might've been able to afford two million. And there's like nothing here for that. So this is really like how we talk about affordable and how we talk about missing middle. I think that SB9's intention is to create these units that are kind of allowing, you know, more people to have the opportunity to live here, which is, I think what we need to have, you know, a future. We can't just have a city of super, super, super wealthy people. It's just, our whole region isn't going to survive. So I'm, I'm interested in adopting the resolution, taking out the thing that staff has flagged in Section Three that makes the mention of the 1,600 square foot floor area limit for the 5,000 under lots. And letting staff come back with, you know, their analysis on that. But I'm, like I said before, I'm not interested in making this development more prohibitive than SB9. I will concede not to go. I will concede not to go further than SB nine, but I don't want to put roadblocks to um, make it infeasible. And I think putting these deed restricted things are um, to me, they're, they're um, I'm not interested in that at this stage, and I think we can continue to discuss it, it comes back as an ordinance, but I, I, I personally don't want to see that now. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. And I totally hear you. I just, it just is like, if someone's got two million, they've got options. And is that what this was about? And that's my only question. Um, it's, is that the missing middle? And it could be that like in Menlo Park, it is the missing middle, but that's hard for me to wrap my brain around, to be honest with you, even in Menlo Park. I'm, I'm going to go to Councilmember Mueller, but pu- please, after that, you can certainly respond to me, but yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, at a high level, you know, I think we would all agree with Councilmember Wilson uh, that we want to provide housing for the missing middle. The issue is that in Menlo Park, as alluded to by everyone, the housing prices and the housing market is really uh, overheated, I would say. And so I think it's incumbent on us to actually dive into the numbers and figure out how we actually achieve housing for the missing middle, rather than deal with saying that I want to stay in sort of an ideological place that would do that. I think we actually have to dive into a policymaking place where we're saying, we're going to go look at the numbers. We're going to look at what market values are. We're going to look at what percentages get us to actually creating affordable options for the missing middle, and we're going to implement that from a policymaking perspective, because the market is at a place right now that I don't think ideology, ideology alone will actually create that housing for the missing middle. It's not going to, we're not going to be in a position where we're going to say, well, we're just going to leave SB nine the way it is, and it's going to apply the same here that it's going to apply, say, in Modesto. It's not. It's not going to apply that way here. I lived in a, we lived in a home on Willow Road, a three-bedroom, two-bath condo when I first moved here. And you know, candidly, at the time we first moved here in two thousand, I don't know, early mid, 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 between two thousand, two thousand and ten, it was a missing middle condo. It's not anymore. And boy, I'm sorry, I sold it, but it's not anymore, and that, and that's not in a duplex. There are multiple condos in that duplex, and it is not like, I couldn't afford, you know, honestly, I, my, my family person moved into Menlo Park, we wouldn't have been able to move in there now. So I think that's what's really incumbent on us. It's incumbent upon us to figure out, okay, are we truly creating housing for the missing middle by doing this? And if we're not, how do we go ahead and, and do the math so we know that we are? So that we get that mix that we're, that the SB nine was intended to try to create, and that ideologically we all want. It's just a difference of how we're going to get there, that we're talking about. The, the other thing, uh, so I, I guess I just, I'll leave it at that. But I do, I want to do that math and make sure that at the end of the day, what we get is a good mix and not a bunch of overpriced duplexes. So I think the market right now would result within a bunch of over, if we don't do this right, we run the risk without, so if we don't do enforcement, and we don't really dive into the, the math, I think we run the risk of getting a lot of overpriced, overpriced duplexes, people speculating on the distance it is uh, from Facebook and Stanford Hospital, Canada.
But, but if I could push you, Councilmember Mueller, is that a value in and of itself? Like having a two fifteen-hundred-square-foot, you know, sort of duplex unit versus one thirty-five-hundred-square-foot unit? Because I, it's, you, you know, I hear that's what Councilmember Willison is saying, and, and there is some, I'm not saying I'm there, but there is some validity to that argument.
You, you do get some value from that, but you don't get the mix that you were intending. You don't get the missing middle. You don't. You just get overpriced condos. And I think what we're trying to do, the true intent of SB nine, as I understood it, to eliminate the right to single-family home zoning, is to create the mix of diversity that you want within your housing stock that you cannot do in an overheated housing market. What I'm saying is our market is so overheated, if we really want to do that, if that's really the intent, then we really need to dive in and do the math to make sure that's what we get.
But then if I can, I just, like, maybe the math, a little bit to the city attorney's point, doesn't work out in Menlo Park, like, right? M- m- maybe that, if you're just going to try to say, like, maybe there's no real place for the missing middle in Menlo Park, because given construction costs and all of those other costs, it's like if we say that the house has to be priced at this, or has to be targeted towards this, this sort of um, economic demographic, then do lots of, y- you know, then maybe it doesn't pencil out at all, and you just don't get it, wh- which is I, what, what I said, and maybe that's a trade-off we want to make, um, but, but that's where you may be headed.
Well, well, maybe, but we don't know. We don't, I mean, that's the thing that's a little, I mean, honestly, it's a little frustrating at night, because this is, seems like more of a study session than adopt resolution, but I know why we have to do it in the interim time period. But, you know, maybe that's the case. But I, you know, honestly, at eighty percent, I mean, we're not talking about, what's really interesting to me is that uh, you know, if we were to do eighty percent, that's not what we do with low and very low income, sign close, right? Sign of close. And there are folks who can go ahead and, and make, make those developments work, right? With help from us, obviously. But we haven't had any, you know, when you're trying to do policy like this, you get testimony, we haven't had anyone come in and say, yeah, no one's going to do it for eighty percent. Like, no one's, we haven't, we don't have that in front of us tonight. And honestly, at the way the market is, I find it really, you know, I find it, because we're talking about a situation where the homeowner already owns the land, the biggest cost in development is owning the land. And we're talking a situation where we're creating value for that homeowner, because they get to split their lot. So, and then the, the biggest, the biggest hurdle they had is gone from a value perspective in terms of the investment. I mean, you look at the, you look at this around here, people are tearing down really, you know, really nice homes, I think, to build even bigger homes, bec- and, and the big cost is the land. So it seems, it just doesn't seem to me that it makes sense that the biggest, you know, the biggest impediment to building something around here is land, and they get, they get, they get half of it for free, that, that, that it wouldn't be able to work uh, for us to, 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 to make sure and, and take the time to ensure that we're actually creating the diversity of housing stock that we're intending to create.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I just want, I think we need to just move ahead at this point. I think that, that we should not be trying to put on um, price limitations, but we should be tracking what we're getting. We obviously won't know what the final asking price is, but we'll have some clue as to what size people are building, how many people are building without the restrictions, and then that'll inform us for um, future decisions. And I think that, very honestly, it sounds like we're all on the same page, and it's just what's actually going to work to get it done.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, um, I hear you, uh, Councilmember Mueller. I, I think another, um, if I'm, because honestly, when SB nine passed, I, I'd been reading about it and thinking about it, but I hadn't really been reading about it and thinking about it, like how it would affect me personally. And after it passed, I looked at my backyard, and I was like, I don't know what's going to become of my kids. Like, I don't know if they're going to go and be super successful and, or if they're going to need to live near here in my house, and I don't know what's going to happen to my parents and my in-laws, and they need to live here. And so I'm like, gosh, this could be an opportunity for my family to like put something in my, if, if I ever needed to, to, to do this. So then if I'm like required to have like an eighty percent thing, I just, I just think it adds like another hurdle. And I think the analysis that I've seen, like by the Turner Center at UC Berkeley on the like, and who knows what the future will bring, to Mr. to Mayor Combs' earlier points about um, guessing the future. But um, it sounds like the, the, like, if we look at what's happened with ADUs and the production of ADUs and apply that to single-family homes, this is going to be like a trickle, um, not a tsunami. Who knows? We'll see. But we are the council, and we can do future ordinances and changes. So I'd like to kind of, like I said, not make it more prohibitive than necessary, and we can revisit it. And um, but with that, can I, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
But May, I, I don't understand the logic, because eighty, put eighty percent on it isn't going to mean to that you have to charge your mom or your kids anything. Just means you can't charge them more than eighty percent. So I don't, I don't understand the example. So.
Maybe it wasn't a great example.
Okay, well, fair. I appreciate that. So I honestly, guys, I'm uh, I truly believe that we have to do that extra work. Like, I really believe we have to do the extra work. And I also want to talk about, uh, I also want to talk about the enforcement mechanisms within the deed restrictions. Like, can we get enforcement mechanism from the deed restrictions tonight that says if someone doesn't, if someone doesn't comply with three years, and it's in the deed covenant, that they lose it?
Um, I'll go to Vice Mayor Nash, and then I'm going to come back to you for that motion.
I was just, right now, all we're trying to do is something that'll get us through maybe two months, three months, when staff will come back with an ordinance. I think we should go with a fairly simple, what staff is recommending right now, and then come back once we have data. Right now, we have no data. So we're just making decisions. I think we just make the best decision that staff um, who has experience with home building and the planning can make, and will come back in two to three, they will come back in two to three months in front of council, and we will need to have a robust conversation at that point, although we still probably won't have much data, but at least we'll know what happened in the first couple of months.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just sort of, sort of chime in, then I go to Councilmember Wilson for uh, a, a, a motion. A- a- I mean, a- again, since there are so many unknown, unknowns, I would default to um, more restriction, uh, especially since we're talking about an interim scenario. If it's the case that I um, if I, if I restrict um, for an interim period, why I get some understanding of what the impacts are, um, then that's, y- y- you know, that's fine with me, based on a sense of what the alternative could be. Um, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a close call, but, but that's where I'm at. Councilmember Wilson.
So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution directing the city manager and city attorney to develop interim guidance rules and regulations for implementation of Senate Bill nine before January first, two thousand twenty-two. And I'd like to um, flag in the resolution in section three, where um, it's talking about uh, substandard lots that are less than five thousand square feet, to remove the end of the sentence that says where the maximum floor area limit is sixteen hundred, and instead have staff come back with a, a proper recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just have a follow-up question, possibly friendly amendment, about having information um, on the website. I realize some will be on the website that's actually in um, multiple languages, if that's possible, or at minimum, at least in Spanish.
I would be very much in support of that amendment.
Okay, well, then we'll take that as an amendment and a second. Correct? Okay, City Court Karen.
Correct, thank you. I did want to get clarification um, for the motion that we are not including uh, staff to return with an updated recommenda- or uh, staff to prepare an ordinance implementation and provisions of SB nine.
Will you please repeat that?
So in the motion, um, as it currently states, it does not include.
Oh, I apologize. Um, it should direct staff to come back with the ordinance.
Perfect, okay.
Recommendations for an ordinance.
And Mr. Mayor, can I also?
Yeah, sure, please.
Well, does this mean there would be no standard for lots than five thousand square feet?
Can I state the motion as I understand it? All right, I think the motion is to adopt the resolution attached to Agenda Item F six, directing the city mentor and city attorney to develop interim guidance rules and regulations and all other direction provided therein, with the revision that section three of that resolution be revised to eliminate the following uh, language, quote, where the maximum floor area limit is sixteen hundred square feet, end quote, and to direct the city attorney and city manager to provide interim guidance um, publication in uh, multiple languages with at least uh, Spanish being a second translated language. I don't know if there's other languages, Councilmember Taylor, but at minimum, Spanish is what I heard.
So just so unclear, what is the impact on lots that are less than five thousand square feet?
They're directing us to come back. They're, they are, they are delegating that.
So. Okay, at our own discretion. Correct.
So yeah, so what's the, because I'm not clear on that either. So, so staff is going to develop.
So the remaining language that pursuant to Councilmember Wallace's direction is the city council authorizes the city manager and attorney to incorporate into interim guidance rules and regulations, a new standard for floor area limit for lots less than five thousand square feet.
Okay, the staff is going to pick that number. Okay, I think, uh, City Court Karen, we have a first and a second.
Yeah, so uh, we have a first by city councilmember Wilson, and a second by city councilmember Taylor. Um, the motion as our city attorney, Mayor Doherty, has stated. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city councilmember Mueller.
No.
City councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City councilmember Willison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
No.
And the motion passes with city councilmember Mueller and Mayor Combs dissenting. Thank you.
Okay, oh yeah, please.
Sorry. Um, so the reason why um, you're voting no is because of not having a restriction on the affordability?
Not just because of that, but also because there's been no, and there's no enforcement mechanism within the deed as, as well. With no, no deed, so, I mean, candidly, the, there's a three-year requirement that's for, that, so for owner occupancy, but we didn't instruct our, we didn't instruct the city attorney or the city ma- city staff to put in any, any enforcement within the deed if they, if it's not, if it's not complied with. And so I think that's important. I actually think that that was a hard-fought amendment that the, the council member, I mean, that uh, Senator Becker got put into the bill. And I actually, when the ordinance does come for us for adoption, I hope the council work with the city attorney's office to make sure that there is some sort of enforcement mechanism, so that if someone uh, is living, has bought a property, lives there for a year, does the lot split, and does all of these, and then, and then leaves, well, what's our, well, you know, you know, oh, well. So, I don't want to, I don't want to have, you know, I mean, very candidly, if I'm someone who is going to be trying to speculate to do this, I'm going to be trying to, I will be, and I will be trying to enjoy uh, this time period between now and three months from now.
Does the city attorney believe that that's something that we will lose two months by not having something there, or it's something which we can catch up with um, later, because it's already in SB nine?
I agree with what Councilmember Wilson said, that I don't think we're going to see like a massive influx in applications. But I also agree with Councilmember Mueller that there is like this gap period where there's a certain measure of risk, that we don't have all the standards we want in place and couldn't impose those new standards. Um, I do have.
I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, what I'm specifically honing in on is the three-year residency.
Yeah, so I, I have not analyzed what the city's enforcement mechanisms are other than having experience with other jurisdictions that are requiring a deed restriction. SB nine does expressly prohibit like local agencies from imposing additional owner occupancy standards other than those provided for in the subdivision on urban lot splits. And the subdivision includes the affidavit that the applicant intends to occupy one of the housing units for, as their principal residence for three years. So I have not analyzed like what the. So I have not analyzed like what the implications that those two sections are together in terms of cities enforcement mechanisms. I do know that once um, an applicant has relied on entitlements and initiated construction, that they have a vested right to continue um, to utilize those. So all of those principles combined um, means that I, I, I cannot provide an opinion tonight on whether or not um, what enforcement mechanisms are most effect, would be most effective.
And I, and those property rights don't vest if someone is engaged in fraud or deceit with the city, correct?
Um, there are revocation proceedings that cities can initiate. They're usually tied to nuisance as less so to fraud or deceit, but there's cases that suggest that you can revoke a vested right when it relates to nuisance. Nuisance is broad.
I don't know if this is just completely out of order, but is there anything that you would recommend that we should have put in the resolution that would protect us? I'm strictly thinking of the very clear three-year residency.
Oh, sorry. I think um, directing staff to include a provision regarding a deed restriction is probably as far as I'd recommend going at this point until we come back with more reasonable, or we have the chance to study the various provisions that I was just referencing. I also know that we just made and approved a motion and we can't reconsider that at the same meeting necessarily, so. Um, however, staff is developing their own interim guidance and we understand the discussion on the table this evening and even if not expressly directed by this council, we always take the council's intentions into consideration.
W- when, just a quick question, would someone's r- rights to these provisions sort of vest, like, right? Um, in a sense of, so someone has their, you know, from this, this tomorrow morning, they go up and, you know, call their architect, right, and get those plans all drawn up and, and submit at some point, like, right after January first, right, like, w- w- when do they, there they've been entitled to, to the rights and then, and, and also then not restricted by any of the possible provisions that don't exist?
What was the second half?
We just, when are they entitled to, to the rights of?
Yeah, it's not, the, the vesting, land use vesting principles are not black and white, but typically and our, like, conservative advice is consider entitlements or permits vested once they've expended money on them after they've been issued. So typically, once you pull a building permit and you rely on it by spending any money in furtherance of the building permit, that's when we consider the rights vested. There are situations and cases where vesting occurs later. Sometimes related to nuisance claims, sometimes related to conditions imposed on the permits, but that's sort of the general principle on vesting.
So it's conceivable that, and then I'll go to Councilmember Mueller, um, that no one's rights might invest under this interim order right now. Depending on how quickly we can get the, um, the permanent approved, back to council and approved.
That's, that would be my goal, that we get an ordinance before you, before anyone has a building permit issued. Not for the purpose of restricting these developments, but for the purpose of giving the council the right to legislate on the matters that the state has reserved to your discretion.
Yeah, Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so the example that would arise would be imagine the circumstance where someone wants to enjoy, uh, so the cleanest way to make money on this, if you're a speculator, candidly, is to buy the lot, split it, and let it go and sell it to a developer. Are you, you're right, and that's the cleanest way, because you don't have to, like, sit there through the whole development. You just, you, you enjoy, you get your value out of it after you've done the lot split. And so if you have a deed restriction on the three years, what happens is someone buys the lot and now they want to go, now, like, a year and a half passes and they want to sell it. Well, there's a cloud on title, okay? And so what it basically means is that when they're going through, they're going through and they're trying to figure out is, you know, is there a cloud on this title? They're going to have to disclose how long they've owned it and where or not they've been in it before that property transaction go ahead and occur. Right? Because if they haven't, you're not going to buy, and you're the buyer, you're not going to buy it because you're, what's your, there's, you know, basically, they haven't complied with the law. And within the deed, if they sell it and it's found out, all of a sudden, that goes back to a single-family lot. So it's those type of things, so it's those types of details, that's one example, but that's one that we want to keep an eye on. So because honestly, what would, you know, you don't want to have the situation where people are just buying up lots, splitting them and then selling them and making, pulling them, just, okay, great, I got, you know, I got the, I got the X's and S's value from doing a lot split. So.
I'll have, let you have the last word on this, Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I just would say, um, given that it's part of SB nine, I assumed that it would be covered with whatever motion we made that we want to be true to SB nine, so I will just leave it there.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, so, so now we'll move on to, oh, okay, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break, um, and then, then we'll return. Sorry.
Welcome back. Having all city council members present, Mayor Combs, you may reconvene the meeting.
All right, thank you, uh, City Corcaren. Um, with that, we'll move on to item F one, recognition of outgoing mayor. City Corcaren, can you call for public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F one, recognition of outgoing mayor, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item F one. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Um, as a individual resident of Menlo Park, speaking for myself, wanted to uh, express gratitude to uh, Mayor Combs for his service. It is a good amount of work. It is a good amount of work to stay on top of everything and facilitate discussion. And I wanted to share appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor, council members. Mayor Combs, this may be the last time that I get to call you that, but I want you to know how much I appreciate the work that you've done this past year and the cost that it brings to you and your family. So every time I heard your children in the background, it was a very powerful reminder that you all have families and that you all have a life. So thank you for giving a substantial portion of your life to the city of Menlo Park and helping us to run smoother.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue. We have one more hand up, Kathleen Daly.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and council members. I remember having a conversation with you, Mayor Combs, when you were nominated or elected as vice mayor. And I thought, oh, you're having, you've got two babies and a big family and a job and wondered, oh, do you really want to do this? But you've done an amazing job. Thank you for your service to Menlo Park and the Willows. And it's just a joy to see you and your family out and about in the Willows. And yeah, just thank you for what you've done for Menlo Park and all the best to you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And now seeing no other hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Corcoran, and thank you to Ms. Jones, Ms. Levin, and Ms. Daly for those very, very nice comments. And I do, Kathleen, very much remember the horror in your face at the thought that I would be having to take this on with two kids. And that made me scared. But thank you. Thank you for the comments. I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Nash now.
Thank you so much. And you've done an amazing job. We have a proclamation honoring Menlo Park Mayor Drew Combs. Whereas Drew Combs was first elected to the city council in 2018, selected as vice mayor for 2020, and served as mayor in 2021. And whereas Mayor Combs has demonstrated a dedication and fortitude in leading the city as mayor during the COVID-19 pandemic, demonstrating leadership by initiating the reopening of the city council chambers and holding hybrid meetings. And whereas Mayor Combs served first as a bicycle commissioner and then a planning commissioner, where he became aware of the passion that many residents have for Menlo Park, which convinced him to commit to helping residents feel they have a voice on the city council. And whereas Mayor Combs worked tirelessly to further enhance the quality of life for all Menlo Park residents, staying focused on manageable goals aimed at meeting quality of life needs for residents in the near term. And whereas Mayor Combs always engaged with city staff, ensuring that first-time presenters at city council meetings were recognized. And whereas Mayor Combs represented the city at numerous civic and special events, including the Golden Acorn Awards, Arbor Day, the Juneteenth Celebration, Menlo Park Community Campus Groundbreaking, the annual tree lighting ceremony, and numerous other events. And whereas Mayor Combs made himself available for anyone in the community to discuss issues of the day, code compliance concerns, and to address important issues, including championing the need for improvements to the Willow Oaks Park and the repaving of Willow Road and landscaping of the Willow 101 interchange. And whereas Mayor Combs augmented his role on city council by serving on the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Agency and the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, further demonstrating his commitment to protecting the availability of water and improvement of the creek infrastructure. And whereas Mayor Combs demonstrated his leadership by approaching each policy issue with incisive, independent analysis and a focus on the best outcome for the Menlo Park community with grace and humor. Now therefore, he proclaimed that the city council recognizes and honors Drew Combs for his dedication and service to the Menlo Park community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. So is now where I say something? Yeah, I think that that's next, right?
So yes, now you accept the proclamation.
So, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, for those kind words. And for, you know, everyone who worked on putting this together, I do really appreciate it. So again, obviously, there's not really a big deal. I'm not going anywhere. I'm just moving a few feet over. But I did want to share some reflections and to give some things, as, you know, I conclude my tenure as mayor. You know, when I lost my first election to city council in 2014, I mostly considered that a one-shot deal and didn't really see that as something that would probably happen again. But following that loss, there were two sort of key conversations or discussions. I had one in 2016 and one in 2018 that ultimately led me to run again and to serve on city council and to serve a term as mayor. And both of those conversations were with people who are currently my colleagues. The first conversation was in 2016 at Cafe Baroni with council member Taylor. And I remember vividly she was saying, trying to convince me to run for council again. And as I was talking, and I hadn't engaged with her much, and she was really nice. And I just kept saying in my head, I'm not going to let this woman convince me to run for city council. I'm not going to let this woman convince me to run for city council. And but I remember, you know, being struck by her commitment to Menlo Park, her commitment to seeing change in Menlo Park. And it certainly primed me to think again about running for council, not that year. I did. I didn't let her convince me to run. But it certainly got me thinking about it in a way that I really had after that loss. And so then that set up another conversation in 2018 with council member Mueller. And I think probably to call it a conversation would be a misnomer. It was a series of never-ending conversations, if I remember correctly. Who, and council member Mueller at that time was trying to convince me to run. And again, at the end of all those conversations, I remember saying, no. And then he would come back for the next conversation and seemed to have forgotten that I said no the first time or that prior time. And obviously, one time I did say yes, obviously, at the end. And so I ended up running again. I will say, council member Taylor, council member Mueller was a little bit more persistent than you or maybe a little bit more nagging. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But what I want to say to both of you, as I wrap up my tenure as mayor, is I want to thank you for the faith that you had in me, that you think I would do a good job in this position and serving this community. And I hope that, to this point, I have lived up to it. Have one more year to screw things up, hopefully, to this point. I do want to also, so those are the reflections. I do want to thank some people. I want to thank the city staff, especially City Corcoran for being patient with me, for your calmness, astuteness, and your unquestioned professionalism. I also want to thank Nicole Casades in the city manager's office for your help and assistance during my tenure as mayor. Whenever I had a question, and there were multiple questions, you always had the answer or could steer me in the right direction, and I truly appreciate it. Again, I want to thank all of staff. I know that the past couple of years have been especially challenging. And I appreciate all of your interactions with me during my time on council and especially during my year as mayor. There are some specific staff members I do want to mention, given that I had, you know, consistent interactions with them. And that's Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaras, Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya, the Deputy City Manager Justin Murphy, and the Library and Community Services Director Sean Reinhardt. Thank you for your professionalism and dedication to this community. And of course, I want to thank the city manager, Starwood Jerome Robinson. The city is lucky to have had someone so knowledgeable, committed, and capable of steering it through some of the most challenging times in recent history. I thank you for your patience, for sharing with me your knowledge and wisdom, and for your fierce commitment to your staff. I always joke with my own team at work as like, you know, we may go down, but we'll go down together. I've seen an equally intense commitment to your people and you, and I praise you for it. Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank my wife Alexa for indulging me over the course of my involvement with this city government, which of course started when I was rejected for the bike commission in 2012. I know you all know that. I clearly have not gotten over that. I don't think I will ever get over it because I always mention it. But you have, Alexa, indulged me even in this interest and this desire to have impact in this way, even as our lives have changed dramatically over this period, going from, you know, just me and you to us plus to Daly and Highland. And I think there is like three moves during that period. And so again, I thank you for that. But I don't thank you simply for your support of me. I thank you for being an example and for being an inspiration. You have an instinct towards empathy, towards charity, towards compassion, towards being of service that I have to admit, I found a little strange when we first met. I've always leaned more towards pragmatism and skepticism. But you have shown me how rich life can be by being guided by optimism and being willing to invest your time, your hope, and your energy in your community in all of the ways that can manifest itself. Also, your work ethic and follow-through leaves me exhausted, and if I'm honest, with something to prove. So I ran for city council. Again, I thank you for being my partner in every sense of the word. I want to say to council member Wilson, I truly appreciate the energy and passion and intellect that you bring to this role, and I look forward to serving with you. To Vice Mayor Nash, I want to say I wish you all the best in your tenure as mayor. I could offer some flowery language, but I think the best advice I can impart is a version of Colin Powell's Pottery Barn Rule, "Don't break it." But all kidding aside, I truly wish you a prosperous and hopefully a relatively uneventful tenure as mayor. So those are my reflections. Thank you for indulging me. Okay, no, I'm done. So I think I don't have anything else.
Council member Wilson.
Yeah, I just, Mayor Combs, I know that this year was hard in many ways. But I've always admired your commitment to your constituents and your commitment to your family and your wife and your cute little kids. So I too look forward to a new year ahead of us, and I wish you the best.
Okay, well, thanks, Drew, for outing me there. Appreciate that. I'm just teasing. I'm proud of it. I look back and I, but there's a footnote to your story that I think I should share, and that's that. There was another person who I want to acknowledge tonight. When you were serving on the planning commission, a person who I cared deeply about and checked in all the time about how things were going on in the city was Catherine Stroh. And Catherine had tremendous faith in you as a fellow commissioner and shared that with me constantly. And it was when there was the talk of you running, there was a group of people, and she was, as you know, had tremendous faith in you to be the mayor and to be the council member who you've become, who you are. And I remember that tonight. I remember that tonight because I remember then there was that time to push that one meeting to try to remove you. And how I remember how fired up she was before the meeting and then after the meeting, the talk of that. And I'm so glad that night that we, that you, that we won that fight. You stayed on the plan commission, and I'm so glad you did ultimately decide to run. I don't think when you ran, you decided you had any idea that you'd be mayor in a year like this. I don't think you could ever plan for that. And you've done it with grace and integrity. And what I really appreciate in all your decision-making is that you are a fierce advocate for your district. But you're also always a fierce advocate for the entire city. And you bring that in the way that you interact with staff and with all of us. And our conversations are always elevated as a result of that. And I just, I thank you for that. And in my final comment is Catherine Stroh is a really smart lady. And I really, really appreciate the fact that she always did follow up and share all those wonderful things that she saw from you in the planning commission.
Council member Taylor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Mayor Combs, your leadership has given me inspiration. And I appreciate the acknowledgement, respect, and inclusion that you have given me consistently. And you have given my community consistently and the city of Menlo Park. Thank you. And I'm glad we will be serving again together in the new year.
I'll make comments in a few minutes.
Okay, so then we've called for a public comment right into, so then we can move on to the next agenda item, right? Okay, the next regular business item is selection of the 2022 mayor and vice mayor. City Corcoran, can you call for a public comment on this?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F2, selection of the 2022 mayor and vice mayor, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item F2. And seeing no comments, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, well, City Corcoran, I think I'm going to turn it over to you to take nominations for the city council for the selection of mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, I will take any verbal nominations for the selection of mayor for 2022.
Council member Wilson.
I'll nominate Vice Mayor Betsy Nash.
Thank you.
Council member Mueller.
Last second.
City Corcoran, we have a first and a second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Wilson and a second by city council member Mueller. Any further nominations? Seeing none, by roll call vote, appoint Vice Mayor Nash as mayor of Menlo Park for 2022. City council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
So I'm going to now, I'm going to now turn management of the meeting over to Mayor Nash.
Thank you so much. May I have nominations from the city council for vice mayor? Thank you so much. May I have nominations from the city council for vice mayor? Councilmember Will, Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I would like to nominate Jen Willison, Councilmember Willison, for vice mayor.
Thank you. I will second that.
Thank you. Do you have any other further nominations for vice mayor? Seeing none, I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by Mayor Nash to appoint City Councilmember Willison as Menlo Park's Vice Mayor 2022. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Vice Mayor Willison, would you like to say any words?
Oh, I'm just looking forward to bright days in 2022 and your leadership. Mayor Nash, that's gonna get used to. And here's to our whole community kind of moving hopefully beyond what we've grown accustomed to the last couple of years with pandemic and really brighter days. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am truly proud to have the support of my wonderful colleagues on the council in selecting me as the city's mayor for the coming year. I want to give a shout out to our community of Menlo Park residents and businesses for whom we work every day. And to my family without whose support this service would never be possible. The prospect of serving as Menlo Park's mayor this year is as challenging as it is exciting. The year is shaping up to be one of the one of major transitions and opportunities for us all. First, I want to thank Drew for everything he did as our mayor last year. It was a truly challenging 12 months, and his leadership through the pandemic emergency served the city well. Thank you. The next 12 months will be a year to focus on seizing opportunity, extending outreach, and building inclusiveness. Going into 2022, we already know some of the important matters we will be working on. For example, early in 2022, we will be hiring a new city manager to replace retiring city manager Jerome Robinson. This is an exciting opportunity for someone to lead a strong team working with council, staff, and the community. The housing element will be prominent as we move into its environmental review stage and embark on the safety and the environmental justice components. This work must be founded on effective community outreach and input. We want a Menlo Park that is multi-generational, diverse, dynamic, and balanced. We want everyone to feel welcome and respected here. Two large developments on El Camino, Spring Line and Middle Plaza, expect to achieve occupancy late next year, bringing more residents close to downtown and creating new opportunities for retailers, restaurants, and other businesses. They will also create new retail centers and gathering spaces within their own developments. The Guild Theater is scheduled to open in January, establishing a new music venue for residents and a draw to visitors, contributing to a vibrant downtown. These new levels of activity will require us to redouble our focus on improving transportation and safe streets citywide. Menlo Park's rail corridor has priority projects already in the queue, including the Middle Plaza pedestrian and cyclist undercrossing, grade separations, and evaluating quiet zones. Other priorities under already underway include election redistricting, Menlo Park community campus construction, and reimagining public safety. And finally, the umbrella over all these projects is climate change and the challenge of mitigating and adapting to its impacts on Menlo Park, particularly its disproportionate impacts on our Bayfront community and on future generations. Thanks again, and I look forward to a productive 2022, working with everyone toward our common goals. Thank you. Thank you. And now I'm trying to catch up. So the next item is to appoint city council representatives and alternates to various local and regional agencies and as liaisons and members to city council advisory bodies. To and City Clerk Judy Heron will. Please could you call for a public comment, introduce the item, and then call for public comment?
And thank you, Mayor Combs. Or I'm already, look at that. Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F three, appoint city council representatives and alternatives to various local and regional agency and as liaison and members to the city council advisory bodies. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for a public comment on item F three. Seeing none, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Mayor. Pro temp, I'm sorry, ex-Mayor Combs, you made this look so easy.
So. So if you'd like, I do have attachments. I think it's C of the staff report up on the screen. This lists the regional, the advisory bodies, I believe in alphabetical order. And we can go again alphabetically down the list if there's further discussion or if the city council wants to. Asking clarifying questions, we can do that as well. Attachment B of the staff report, I believe, has the current members serving on each of these different bodies.
Very good. And would you like, will you do this or would you like me to do this?
To walk through? I can walk through if you'd like.
Sounds good. Okay.
All right. So through the mayor, if you go, if we would like to first look at ABAG, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments.
So I think this is typically the mayor and vice mayor, which will work fine. So that would be also true of the League of California Cities, the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce, and the San Mateo Council of Cities. Is there any?
Great. So. So confirming we are appointing Mayor Nash and Vice Mayor Willis into those four bodies.
Correct. Thank you.
Moving right along. We do have Bosca.
So actually, let me, I can probably, thanks. So would you, Councilmember Combs, would you like to continue as Bosca?
I'm sorry, just as a point of clarification, I thought this had been changed. The council has appointed Councilmember Combs, and that's a four-year commitment that's unchangeable unless he resigns.
Excellent. Congratulations.
But if there's a desire to have me resign, I'm.
Not at all. Thank you. And the Airport Community Roundtable, that is currently Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mueller. Is anyone else interested? Do we have anyone who's Councilmember Taylor, please?
I'm expressing my interest in remaining as primary.
That sounds very good, Councilmember. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to try this one out. If you want to take off turn, it's up to you. I don't want to take, okay. I'll check out the airport.
So to be Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Vice Mayor Willison. And on the Caltrain Modernization Local Policy Group, that is currently Councilmember Willison, Councilmember Mueller, is there any desire to make any changes with that?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that one.
Excellent. The C KEG that is currently, I believe, Councilmember Taylor, and you are expressing an interest in staying on that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Excellent. And the backup, I'm sorry, these are not tracking exactly. Who is currently the?
I have the alternate as City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
I don't need to be the alternate on that. Someone else can do it. It's fine.
Would anyone like, Councilmember Combs, please, would like to be the alternate? And on the Community Resources Group for Stanford University, that has been myself and Councilmember Taylor.
I would actually be interested in doing that and joining that if that's okay with either of you.
That I would be happy to step off and have you take on that role.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Taylor, would you like to continue?
Yes.
Excellent. And let's see, the Emergency Services, JPA, that's currently Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Combs. Is there any desire for anyone else to get on or anyone to step to make a change? Councilmember Taylor, that's fine with you. Very good. And the Facebook Local Community Fund again is, oh, I guess that's Councilmember Taylor and myself. We have not yet done anything with that. Is there any desire for anyone else to take on that role? Councilmember Taylor, are you willing to continue?
Yes.
Very good. I will as well. Thank you. And on the Grand Boulevard Task Force, that is currently Vice Mayor Willison and Councilmember Combs as alternate. Any desire to make changes? Okay, so that one's continuing. And let's see, on the Heartboard Agency Committee, that is currently Councilmember Mueller and Vice Mayor Willison. Any changes? Very good. And on PCE, that is currently, I'm the primary and Vice Mayor Willison's the secondary. And I would be happy to continue on that if no one else is interested. And you'll continue as alternate. Excellent. San Francisco Kito Creek, JPA, I know that someone is going to be the chair next year, so. Aren't you the vice chair this year? I read on the. Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Would you like to stay on the JPA? I assume. Very good. Thank you. And Councilmember Taylor, would you like to continue as the alternate?
Yes, thank you.
On the San Francisco Kito Creek, is there any concern, anyone else interested? So let's happily confirm, Councilmember or ex-Councilmember. Carlton, thank you. And on the South Bay Waste Management, that is currently Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Combs. Any changes there? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I wanted to find out if Councilmember Combs was interested in just switching and being primary and then myself being the alternate. I don't want to roll off, but just wanted to find out if there was any interest.
I think that the issue here is that Fourth Thursday is also when the JPA meets. So under any other circumstance, I would say yes, but that that conflict would makes it impossible to serve as a primary on the JPA. The San Francisco Kito Creek J.
Thank you. Then we'll keep it as it is.
Thank you. And the Finance and Audit Committee, we currently have two members. I was actually wondering if we want to do, do we want to continue to have two members on, two council members on the committee? Or is there any point in having this discussion? I know that it's something where there's, it's sometimes challenging time. What, Councilmember? Combs.
Yeah, so I I could be supportive of of multiple options here, but but it is my intent to roll off.
That's my understanding, right.
And so either I replace or we go with a different model or the finance.
So yes, I had heard that. Councilmember Mueller.
I candidly think we should leave with it too, because at some point, Council, Councilmember Combs and I just started alternating. Sometimes we both agree, but we'd alternate, and I think that actually makes sense for this. I'm happy to stay on it. I get along with the committee and been following their work, so I'm happy to stay on.
I just know they've been having some, they've just been making quorum.
Yeah.
So Councilmember Willison, were you interested in the other?
Um, yeah, I have a little bit of interest in the finance. Now I'm wondering if I'm taking on. Maybe I spoke too soon on the airport because I forgot about the four assignments I have now as vice mayor. But I would do. Yeah, I would. I'm open on the finance. I'll wait and hear what, does Cecilia have anything to say or do you have an opinion on this?
Councilmember Taylor? Do you have an interest in the Finance Audit Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Vice Mayor Willison, if if you're not interested, then I I will. But if not, I'm I'm willing to to not be on the Finance and Audit Committee. It's up to you.
I can take it solo. It's fine. If you guys would rather, I can take it solo. If it's too much for everyone else, I'll just, that's fine.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, as alternate on the other four committees, I will plan to be going to those committees so that.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. Then that, well, Councilmember Taylor, did you want the Finance Audit Committee? Or do you want, if that's a thing you want, I can, you can have it unless you don't want it and I'll take it. Because it's a public meeting anyway, so we can still.
Well, I know the only reason why I said I'd take it is because it didn't sound like either of you were excited about it. So I'm like, I was trying to be nice to you both. So whatever works.
And we're trying not to fight over it.
Yeah. Well, if you want to roll off, I mean, we want to just.
Oh, if you both want it, I'll roll off. Sure, cool.
Do you want to check it out with me, Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
All right, I think we're gonna.
Wow, excellent.
All right, well, okay, the other thing, and I think this is what you were hinting at, Mayor Nash, is, you know, it's kind of like, why is the Finance Audit Committee different from all other committees?
Why is it different? And I know that it's been something where it's been challenging because the meetings are at five typically and have been they've often just barely made quorum.
So maybe, so maybe what we do is since council members, this is like hard to change titles. Councilmembers Combs and Mueller have had exposure, and then Councilmember Taylor and I can have exposure. And then we'll have more information. We can come back and have an informed conversation about the Finance Audit Committee and the liaison versus committee member role later. So.
Sounds great. So why don't we say that, yes, Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Willison will be the two representatives for the Finance Audit Committee.
Great.
Or board member, body members.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Complete Streets Commission is currently Councilmember Taylor.
I'm comfortable staying on.
Very good. The CEOC. Currently, actually, why don't we put that one aside for the moment? And go ahead with the EQC, I have been the liaison, I'm happy if someone else wants to take it, I'm also happy to continue. Okay, I will continue as.
I just think it matches up to PCE.
It does, very, very strongly, yes, thank you. I just wanted to give people an opportunity if someone else was interested. Housing Commission is currently Councilmember Willison, Vice Mayor Willison.
Yeah, and I have both housing and planning, and I'm willing to give one or both, I'm willing to change it up if somebody wants one of those.
I'll take one, so which one would you prefer not, I don't have a preference, so if there's.
Does anybody else want one too, I mean, I.
Oh, you're seeing they're both up.
I'm open to staying, I'm open to moving, I just, I'm not hoarding.
Yeah.
Councilmember Taylor, do you have any interest in?
No, thank you.
All right, what's your preference?
I'll go with the housing, since I have less exposure to housing.
Okay, I'm happy to stay with planning unless, okay, would you like, unless Mayor?
No one.
Nash, okay.
Thank you. And Library Commission, I am currently the liaison. Councilmember Mueller.
I'd be happy to do it.
Wonderful, thank you. Parks and Rec.
Be happy to do that one too.
Councilmember Mueller.
I'm on that, and I'd like to stay, actually.
Okay, I was just being nice, sure.
All right, Councilmember Combs will remain. And the Planning Commission, I believe that was going to be.
Yeah, I was gonna say on that.
Willison, very good. Okay, Outside Agencies, the Flood and Sea Level Rise Agency, I'm sure that Councilmember Taylor would like to stay on that.
Yes, please, thank you.
And I have been the alternate, although I have, Councilmember Taylor is incredibly reliable, so I've not had any meetings. Is anyone else interested in being the alternate, or I'm happy to stay?
I can be the alternate, just to take that off your plate, in case there is something that comes up. Unless you want to stay.
Actually, I will stay.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Thank you. And the Menlo Park City School District, that is currently Councilmember Willison and Councilmember Combs.
So, I'm confused, is this all schools or just MPCSD?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I reached out to all the school districts, but it says MPCSD, but, I mean, I'd be happy to share this more with somebody, I mean.
I'd like to do it, actually, I'd be very interested in doing.
You could be the primary if you want.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
And this, so this is for all Menlo Park School Districts, excellent.
Do you want to do that with Councilmember Combs, or do you want me to stay on with you?
Totally up to you guys.
If you want to roll off, oh, but if you don't want to roll off.
I can roll off, and I'll just maintain, I'll just make myself accessible, the school board members, whatever, that want to talk. Great.
All right, so that's Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Combs, very good. And then Menlo Park Fire District, which is currently Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Taylor, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, I just wanted to go back to the one we just discussed, the school districts, you're saying all, so is that all elementary? Is that including high school district?
I was anticipating that it was all school districts in Menlo, all public school districts in Menlo Park.
Right, so the high school district.
Okay, thank you.
When I did it, I met with, I reached out to all the Ravenswood, Sequoia, Los Lomitas, and Menlo Park City.
And then there's Reddick City School District.
Even though I know they're here, but.
Thank you, and then going to the Menlo Park Protection District, I am happy to roll off.
I'm fine, I'm happy to do it.
Excellent, do we have an alternate then?
Who was the alternate before?
It was Councilmember Taylor with Councilmember Mueller is the alternate, Councilmember Mueller will roll into the primary.
I'll do the alternate.
Thank you. And the Downtown Street Closure Task Force.
I'd like to remain.
I would as well. Oh, and we still have, okay, let's hold the CEOC for another. Well, actually, no, should we go ahead with the CEOC? I was thinking we also have a Housing Element Subcommittee that we wanted to discuss, but.
You could discuss them in conjunction with one another.
Right, okay. Councilmember Mueller.
No, 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 I have nothing to discuss.
All right, let's hold the CEOC to our discussion about the subcommittees. And we'll come back if that works okay for you.
Yes, and then we'll hold on the motion for this until we're clear on the CEOC liaison.
Sounds great, thank you.
So let's go to item F4.
Okay, item F4 is appoint city council members to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees and disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees. So is it possible you've got attachment A to?
I do, thank you. As a brief introduction to this item, the city council is being requested to make appointments to city council standing subcommittees, the city council ad hoc subcommittees, and disband any inactive city council ad hoc subcommittees. And through the mayor, may I open public comment for this item?
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F4, appoint city council members to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees and disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for a public comment on item F4. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And so, actually, this is
The wrong one.
The wrong one. Thank you, perfect. So we currently have the Community Grant Funding Standing Subcommittee, and that is Councilmember Combs, Councilmember Taylor, I know you're just about to meet, I believe. So would you, for 2022, would you like to? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Nash, I'm comfortable staying on.
Thank you, and Councilmember Combs, very good, so that will stay the same. So the next is the Rail Subcommittee, and I was actually going to propose that we disband that Subcommittee, and instead you use the entire council, bring it, all the items to council, since it seems that it meets infrequently, and I believe that all the items are of great interest to the council. City Manager Jerome Robinson, did you want to make any comments?
No, nothing specifically, but it does seem like a good idea.
Is that any objection?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. And so the next Subcommittee is the Business Subcommittee, and currently, actually, Councilmember Mueller is on that, and I just rolled onto that. And I'm interested in staying if there's.
I think I brought this up before, maybe a year ago, I don't understand what this committee is.
Well, actually, City Manager Jerome Robinson and I were talking, and go ahead, please.
No matter, Mayor, please, please continue.
So, when we were talking, it seems like it's more of an economic development Subcommittee, and at this point, it's primarily focused downtown. Actually, Councilmember Mueller, please.
Yeah, there's a lot of different stakeholders in the downtown that actually require a lot of, a lot of interaction from the Chamber of Commerce to individual, individual shop owners to, it's, it's, it just, there just is. And working with the city manager to try to figure out how to navigate that. And is, it's actually, that's actually, there's actually quite a bit of work involved in that, and I think if we're really, you know, if the council didn't want to have it, I think you'd be, I think there'd be a lot of a lot of discussion happening at council, to try to figure out how to frame things from, from, from all of that energy. So a great example is the opening of the downtown, opening of the, of downtown street. There was a lot of coalescing, a lot of different stakeholders reaching out and talking and wanting to be heard and talking to everybody. So I really, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of benefit to having this Subcommittee just because of the amount of community interaction involved.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against the, the charge, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, because there's a downtown street closure thing, so how does that differ? And then there's also the Chamber of Commerce people, so I, I'd like to.
It's a very good point, because very honestly, I.
I just would imagine it might create some Brown Act confusion. I'm interested in getting more involved downtown, but I don't, you know, I can wait a little while, but I'm just, I just didn't understand, I don't, I'm just nervous if I'm going to be with Mayor Nash on the Chamber of Commerce stuff, like where the lines get drawn in terms of the Brown Act.
So if I may, I think that chamber meetings, the meetings with the chambers board of directors are really helpful in terms of more global issues. And the Business Subcommittee is really economic development, there are sounding board for economic development issues and direct liaisons with some of the downtown merchants. So there, it isn't often that there's any kind of direct intersection between the two, if that makes sense.
Okay, I guess I'll learn more this year.
I guess, yeah.
I'll report back in a year.
Let's, yes, I'd like to, if
That's fine.
There's no objection, continue with Councilmember Mueller.
Every year, I'll just keep asking about it, and hopefully next year I'll know more, because I haven't served on any of these, so, thanks.
But if I may, I would like to suggest that we rename the Business Subcommittee to Economic Development Subcommittee, and I think that in and of itself would help clarify a little bit.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Okay, this next Subcommittee is City Manager Priorities and Recruitment, and that is currently Vice Mayor Willison and Councilmember Taylor. I assume that if, assuming we're continuing it until the, it will sunset when we do hire a new city manager, thank you. The Climate Action Plan is currently Vice Mayor Willison and myself, and I will just say, I'd like to continue on it, given the PCE and EQC. Very good, and there was one piece of it which Councilmember Taylor and I had talked about splitting off, and that was the CAP6, which is the sea level rise, and whether we would, could have the CAP as the CAP Subcommittee be one through five with Councilmember Willison and CAP number six with Councilmember Taylor and myself, is there any concern about that?
I'm comfortable with that, my only, actually, Councilmember Taylor and I, I didn't ask you, do you have any desire on being on the CAP Subcommittee for all of them, or just on number six?
Just CAP6.
Okay, then I'm happy to stay on with Vice Mayor Nash, or Mayor Nash.
Sounds great, and City Clerk Karen, does that, you've got that, so it'll, very good. Connect Menlo Community Amenities, that one is currently Councilmember Taylor and myself, and I would honestly like for us to continue until we get this presented to council, which will hopefully be in January, I believe. And at that point, we'll see whether there's a need to continue or whether it goes on to an inactive status, but I think certainly through when we present to council, we will stay on that. Councilmember Taylor, do you have any thoughts you want to add?
I agree with you, Mayor Nash.
Thank you. The Facebook Willow Village Development Agreement negotiations, that is currently Councilmember Taylor and myself, and I would like for the two of us to continue if there's no objections. Very good, thank you. The Housing Element Subcommittee, let's actually put that one aside for just a moment, and let's continue with the Menlo Park Community Campus. That is currently Councilmember Taylor and myself. Is there any, certainly Councilmember Taylor needs to, will continue on that. Is there anyone, I'm very happy and would, actually, I would like to continue if there's no one else who's jumping in, very good, we'll continue as such. The Quality of Life Ordinance, currently Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Combs. Is that something that is still active, or should we put it on the inactive list?
Since I barely know what it is, I probably will see inactive, but I don't know if Councilmember Taylor thinks otherwise.
Councilmember Taylor?
I think at this time, it can be put on the inactive list.
Thank you. Reimagining Public Safety, I believe is a very active Subcommittee with Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Vice Mayor Willison. And I assume that that should remain at this time as such. Thank you. The West Menlo Triangle Annexation. I would like to see that go on to the inactive at this point, until we have time for prioritization with staffing.
I would ask, before it went on the inactive, that we would notice it as a council agenda item, I mean, I just feel terrible for this, these folks went through the entire process of collecting a bunch of signatures, they started a Laughco process, like they have done a lot of work, and so, I mean, I would advocate to want to keep it and try to actually move it forward through Laughco, so if we're going to get rid of it, I really think we need to agendize it so that all those people have noticed that it might be going into, into the side bin.
City Manager Jerome Robinson, would you like to comment?
Certainly, we can, we can certainly put it on the agenda sometime in the near, well, no, it's sometime in the future. Not going to say near, because I don't know when we'll be able to do it. I wonder, we had two key proponents, I'd be glad to reach out to them directly and advise them in anticipation that we'll be bringing it back to the council at some point in the future. I mean, this also involves negotiating an agreement with the county, and that could be very time intensive.
It's just that, it's, I mean, it's literally been at least four years, right, like they've been waiting for the negotiation to take place, so.
Well, there's no one on as a members.
Okay, well.
Would, I'm not trying to kill it, I'm just trying to figure out what where we are, it's been four years, it doesn't seem like at this point we have the bandwidth to do it, but I certainly think that there's a desire.
Okay, I, well, what I would suggest is we just bring it back as an agenda item and leave it vacant for now, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. How about the Willow Road, Highway 101 interchange improvements with Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Taylor? What is the status, Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Nash, I am interested in staying on.
Yeah, well, I'll stay.
And City Manager Jerome Robinson, do you have any comments?
Well, I think the subcommittee has given us clear direction, which we're following, not quickly, but we are following to return to the council with the landscaping plan that we have sufficient funding for, and the staff is working on that.
Very good. So it'll stay on active with the current council members?
Certainly.
Thank you. And then actually going, continuing down, the city attorney recruitment, I think we can disband at this point. Inventory Existing Proposed and Potential Citywide Development, Councilmember Taylor. It seems that that is covered at this point by the housing element. So any concerns about disbanding that?
No, Mayor Nash.
Thank you so much. And then the Emergency Response Homeless Encampment in the Bayfront. That was Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mueller. What is the status of that?
I think the, the city, especially the mayor and Councilmember, I'm sorry, the then mayor, Council Taylor, Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Mueller worked very effectively with Caltrans at that point, and we were able to clear much of the Marsh Triangle. So I think at this point, it's either a reinitiation of a project, or we let it fall off.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I mean, candidly, so the city did a great job in partnership with the fire district and the other agencies. As, as Chief Shacklehman is gone, I can't imagine that it could actually continue without the new chief making it a priority for them as well. So I think it kind of, I think it is something that probably goes to inactive until it needs to be, until it needs to be reactivated again. But this is in Councilmember Taylor's district, so I'll let her be the voice of what should happen.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I'm comfortable with this becoming inactive, because I have a request for an agenda item in the coming year.
Thank you. So it will stay together, but be on the inactive list as opposed to disbanded. Very good. Thank you. So going back up to the Housing Element Subcommittee. I know that Councilmember Combs has requested that we get someone else on the committee. It's currently Councilmember Combs and Councilmember Willison. I guess one of the questions is, given that we are heavy into the housing element at this point, is there still a need to have the Housing Element Subcommittee? And then also, we have the secondary question of how we of the CEO see which we and the liaisons there. Comments?
So just the Housing Element Subcommittee, right, and the CIOC liaisons, they're the same?
They are the same, but they're on two separate pages. So yes.
Um, yeah, yeah, I just will read my desire to roll off, and I'll leave it to other council members to throw ideas for
And so
For there.
Thank you. Councilmember Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I think
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Willison.
Whatever. I think like the rail subcommittee, the housing element is something that we all are extremely interested in. So that, to me, sounds like a coming, like, we can get rid of it and just have all those things come to council, and that would be my recommendation. And then the CIOC seems like it's just like a committee that just needs a liaison. But it's interesting, because the CIOC was written as the CIOC, not the Housing Element CIOC, which actually spurred my mind, like, should we have a subcommittee on how the community, how the city does outreach and community engagement in general, not just for the housing element? So that would obviously be expanding the, well, we wouldn't have necessarily the same group of people, but thinking about how we do outreach, is that something? But I don't have any answers to this, but that's, those are my initial thought.
Thank you. So I guess what I would say at this point is, yes, let's, let's count this like we do the housing, the rail subcommittee, bring it to council. I would request that we get regular updates as to what's happening with the housing element through perhaps the city manager reports. And, but did every meeting we get an update as to what's going on, even if it is just a very little.
Ma'am, I'm confused about something. Are we disbanding the CIOC?
Well, that's what, that was going to be the next piece of this, is, so just on the housing element, I would say that we'll bring that back to the into the city manager's purview. CIOC, I don't, I believe that we owe CIOC a robust discussion with them, and that's something that we needed, that we've promised. I believe that they, I don't know if there's been a chance for staff to reach out to them and tell them what our decision was at the last meeting.
We invited them to attend the meeting, so that I haven't followed up on that since, since the meeting, but we certainly can.
Okay, I would request that staff sends them an email that specifically states that we appreciate all of the effort that they've put into it, and that it's really been beneficial, and personally, I think that we need to have to relook at that, because as we go into this safety and environmental justice component, it's going to be very important to have, as I said in my comments, it's going to be very important to have good community outreach, and especially with District One residents. And so we do need to look at that. Councilmember Taylor, do you have any comments?
Mayor Nash, I agree with you.
Thank you. So I would like to bring the CIOC back in one of our early meetings in January and make a decision about the subcommittee at that point, once we have a more robust decision. Councilmember Mueller.
Well, would, would it make sense just to have you and Councilmember Taylor serve as the liaisons to it in the interim?
I would be, Councilmember Taylor, would you like to serve as, you and I will be the liaison until we make some other decision with the CIOC?
I'm comfortable with that.
So, yeah, fine. Thank you.
So confirming we're discussing the Housing Element Subcommittee and not the liaison for the CIOC?
Thank you. So what we're doing at this point is, we're disbanding the Housing Element Subcommittee, and that will come to, back to council, because there's great interest there, and in between meetings or agenda items, City Manager Jerome Robinson will keep us apprised as to what's happening on, with the housing element. The CIOC Committee will, Councilmember Taylor and I will, will be the liaisons to the CIOC Committee until the time when we actually have a broader decision about what is happening there.
Thank you for that clarification. And just one more, looking at the inactive list, the ones in red confirming those are to be disbanded, and the one in black is just marked as inactive. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe, anyone, anyone else have any differing opinion? Excellent job. Thank you. And so we now need motion. Does this need to be two separate motions?
Let's do it as two separate, just to keep the record clean, because they were two separate items. For item F three, which was representatives and alternatives to various local and regional agencies and liaisons members to city council advisory bodies. My recommended motion is to make appointments as representatives and alternates, to various local and regional agencies and liaisons and members to city council advisory bodies as attached, and then planning on attaching the form we used this evening to the minutes.
Thank you. Are there any motions? I'm so moved. Motion, and a second by Councilmember Combs. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Willison, and a second by City Councilmember Combs to make appointments as attached. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And then our second item, which was F four, looking for a motion and a second to make appointments to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees and disband inactive and retain emergency response homeless encampment in Bayfront ad hoc subcommittee as inactive only. Any further city council question or discussion?
So I'll go ahead and move that.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Willison, a second. Thank you.
Okay, that is a motion by Mayor Nash, and a second by Vice Mayor Willison. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Willison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we're going on, moving on to, if I've got this correct, F five, which is provide direction to the city's voting delegate regarding regional vacancies for the next city selection committee meeting December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. City Clerk Karen, could you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So item is as presented. The next city selection committee is December seventeenth, which is this Friday. Typically, the mayor is the voting delegate. If the mayor is not able to attend or sending a proxy, then we will need to complete a delegate proxy form, and through the mayor, I can take public comment on this item?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So any member of the public who wishes to speak on item F five, provide direction to the city regarding a voting delegate for the next city selection committee meeting, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. Final call for a public comment on F five. Seeing none, Mayor Nash may continue.
Thank you very much. And I actually am able to attend the meeting unless anyone else has a strong desire to do this. Thank you. And so City Clerk Karen, do you need anything else on this item?
You know, I do believe in the past, we have done a motion in a second to delegate the mayor, in this case, as the voting delegate.
Thank you.
Then I would move the mayor as the voting delegate and to make the decisions and selections that she deemed most appropriate.
Thank you.
I'd second that. It's been customary, just let the mayor exercise their discretion.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs, and a second by City Councilor Mueller to select Mayor Nash as the voting delegate regarding regional vacancies for the next sister, or the next city selection committee meeting December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, it's the Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And so the next item is informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items, however, a city manager, I'm sorry, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make comment or ask a question on any informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. At this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our information item G one, related to city council agenda topics, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or cellphone, please press star nine. Final call for a public comment on item G one. Seeing none, Mayor Nash may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on the information item? All right. Next is the city manager's report, and Starla, Jerome Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I do not have a report tonight, other than to congratulate you on your mayorship. Congratulate former Mayor Combs on not being there anywhere, and congratulate Vice Mayor Willison on her nomination and election.
Thank you very much. Are there any reports from city council members since the December seventh city council meeting? All right, I actually do have one council member report. And that's, I am pleased to begin my term as mayor by joining the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative. The toll of the COVID pandemic has been great, and they include acceleration of mental health challenges to crisis levels in our county that cannot be addressed by one city alone. This countywide initiative seeks to raise awareness about available resources and to increase access to mental health resources and therapy options. Therefore, I am proud to join eleven other incoming mayors in this initiative and look forward to taking significant steps in the coming year to address mental health needs in our community. Thank you. Are there any other council member reports? In that case, let's adjourn the meeting, and thank you all.